will be joining us throughout the evening. Uh, Mark Murray?
Present.
Jordan Rubin? Carlos Garcia?
I'm here.
Steph, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative.
Judy, I'm here. It's Hannah. I'm sorry, I was muted.
Oh, that's okay. Thank you, Hannah. I knew you were gonna be in and out, so thank you. Uh, Kevin Misakar?
Present.
Kristen Lasz?
Present.
David Snowden?
Present.
Anticipated speakers on the agenda, please respond in the affirmative. Joe Sawyer? Sandra Fritz?
Present.
Pat Collins?
Present.
Bernard Cahill? Teresa Flynn?
Present.
Anthony Frollo?
Present.
Bob Cashman? Maurice DiPaolo? Mark Donahue?
Present.
Jason Molina?
Present.
Good evening to you all. This open meeting of the Finance Committee is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings, and as such, the Governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible, physical location. Further, all members of the public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order, which you can find posted with the general agenda materials for this meeting, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely, so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. For this meeting, the Finance Committee is convening by Google Meet, formerly known as Google Hangouts, as posted on the town's website, identifying how the public may join. Please note that this meeting is being recorded. Please be aware that other folks may be able to see you. Take care not to share a screen on less asked by the chairperson or the staff person. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. Permit me to share the ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I, Judy Vetter, will introduce each board member, staff member, or guest speaker who has the lead role for an agenda item. After they conclude their remarks, I will ask committee members first, then staff members, if they have any questions or comments. When appropriate, I will then call upon the members to offer a motion, and then for a second. Any votes will be taken by roll call. Please hold until your name is called. Please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. Remember that unless a document is being shared, your camera feed is triggered by your speaking or background noise. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For the public hearing portion of the meeting, after members and staff have spoken, the chair will afford public comments as followed. The chair will first ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify their names and addresses only. Once the chair has a list of all public commenters, I will call in each by name and afford three minutes for any comments. For any response, please wait until I yield the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage closely with other members, please do so through the chair, taking care to identify yourself. I now call to order the July 23 meeting of the Finance Committee. May I have a motion to open the public hearing?
Still moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved as second. I'm gonna now do a roll call vote. Mark Adler?
Aye.
Vikram Charber? Vikram Charber?
Aye, sorry.
Aaron Howard?
Aye.
Hannah Kane?
Aye.
Mark Murray?
Aye.
Carlo Garcia?
Aye.
Judy Vetter, aye. The meeting is now called to order. We will now resume a review of the Town Meeting warrant articles for the August 8 Town meeting. At the conclusion of our review, we will close the public hearing. Then the Finance Committee will discuss and vote on the articles. In the interest of time, I ask that presentations of each article be as concise as possible, hopefully no longer than five to 10 minutes. After each article, I will ask if there is any comment or questions from the Finance Committee. Committee members, please indicate if you would like to speak by raising your hand. I will recognize each of you in the order I see you. Once the committee has concluded their comments, I will then ask for any comments by the staff. I then will ask the public if they have any comments. Please allow me to recognize you before you speak. I ask that comments and questions also be kept concise. The order in which we will take articles is different than the posted agenda. Here is the order we will follow this evening. Twenty-nine, thirty-six, thirty-eight, thirty. Then we'll move into the operating budget financials town and school, then to the miscellaneous, and then to the bylaw amendments. So we'll begin with Article 29. Mr. Misakar?
Madam Chair, if you'll permit, I will share my screen and, um, I will turn the presentation over to, um, Ms. Flynn of the Personnel Board, uh, to share the details of Article 29 with you.
Thank you.
Great, thanks everyone. I'm Teresa Flynn. I'm Chair of the Personnel Board, and I'm here with other board members, Tony Froyo, and I believe Sir Bob Cashman is also calling in this evening. We are here to present the Personnel Board's recommendations to Town Meeting under Article 29. There are two recommendations for fiscal 21 that relate to changes to the personnel bylaw and general salary increases. Our first recommendation is to amend the personnel bylaw. These changes are part of the ongoing effort to assist management in recruiting and retaining the most qualified personnel to benefit, to the benefit of Shrewsbury residents and taxpayers. As you know, last year, Town Meeting approved the shift in responsibility of amending the classification and compensation plans from Town Meeting to the Personnel Board. We've amended the personnel bylaw to align with the classification and compensation study recently completed by removing longevity-based compensation and to set up for a performance-based appraisal system. Specifically, step language was removed to allow for employees to move across the salary range based upon their performance, of course, subject to appropriation. New definitions were inserted to provide structure to the open-range merit system. All language has been made gender-neutral, and lastly, bereavement leave was amended to align with policies similar to our comparable communities. We're in the process of documenting all of these changes in a redline format, and that will be provided for review prior to Town Meeting. With regard to salary increases, the Board recommends a salary increase of 1% for administrative and professional technical staff and division managers. This does not, does not apply to department heads, as they have agreed to a voluntary wage freeze effective June 30th of this year. Our recommendation is based upon several factors, including increases being granted by comparable communities, increases for collectively bargained employees in Shrewsbury, and the change in the Consumer Price Index. The recommendation provides a moderate cost of living increase, while balancing the budgetary impacts of COVID-19 and the town manager's strong efforts to avoid actions such as furloughs or layoffs. The value of a 1% increase for these specific employees is $49,379. And that summarizes our recommendations, and we are more than happy to entertain any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Flynn. Um, committee members, do you have any questions or comments? Seeing none. Staff, do you have any questions or comments? Seeing none. Are there any questions or comments, um, from the public? Seeing none, we will then move on to Article 36. Mr. Misakar?
Uh, this evening, Article 36 will be presented, uh, by Mr. Mark Donahue. He is an attorney that is representing the developer and owner of the site. Uh, I believe Mr. Donahue will take it from here. I'm not sure if he has a, um, presentation to share his screen or not. But Mr. Donahue threw the chair if he could present.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Mr. Misakar, members of the committee. Um, I'm a little, with some trepidation, try, might try to share a screen, but I'll try to at least describe to you the land in question. Uh, the land involves the property of, of the former Worcester Sand and Gravel property, north of Holden Street, and for the purposes of Article 36, east of Clinton Street. Um, my client, uh, 160 Holden Street, which is a wholly-owned subsidiary of GFI Partners, acquired that property in January of this year. They acquired it with the intention to continue to operate, uh, and to modernize the sand and stone operation, and they continue to operate that and continue to employ the 20-plus employees who were previously employed by that company. They're in the process of evaluating the property for development purposes. And while it's a large tract with a large prop, uh, piece of property on the opposite side, or westly side of Clinton Street, the land on the eastly side has historically been used for the sand and gravel operation, uh, and is falls within, wholly within, the Commercial Business Zoning District. Commercial Bu, uh, Business Zoning District allows essentially retail-type or mixed development uses uh, in the town of Shrewsbury in accordance with the zoning bylaw. Article 36 seeks to take that property on the eastly side of Clinton Street and change that to limited industrial zoning. That would be consistent with the other property owned on the westly side of Clinton Street, and would allow a number of uses that we believe are more appropriate for the site. Uh, and some of those uses include, under the zoning bylaw, uh, in the town of Shrewsbury, research and development facilities, uh, uh, electrical distribution facilities, or, or, uh, data storage rather, warehouse and distribution, uh, and a number of other type of uses. There are benefits for land being within the limited industrial zone under the town of Shrewsbury zoning bylaw. In particular, for that zone alone, the, the bylaw imposes certain performance standards uh, that affect as far as noise and glare and different kinds of impacts that may have on surrounding property, and establishes empirical type of controls. All of the uses I described would require approval from the Planning Board, and many of them would also require state approvals, and that the process is obviously very early for all of that. So we seek to rezone this property to the limited industrial zoning district. Through our discussions with, uh, the town, uh, and, uh, in, in that process, meeting with the Board of Selectmen, and officially with the Planning Board, we've become aware of concerns, given the proximity of town well sources, uh, to this property. And very early, we discussed this with Mr. Misakar, uh, and he described also the town's concerns that appropriate development needed to take in consideration those well resources. And my client is fully understanding of that and committed to work with the town in that regard. And in fact, has worked previously and is currently working with the town of Franklin in a very similar situation, where he is doing a commercial industrial development in proximity of the town well, and we have provided as part of our e, our mailing to Town Me, Meeting Members, actually, a letter of recommendation from the Town Administrator, uh, of that community. So it's early in the process, but we seek to rezone the property for what we think will be able to allow it to take advantage of its location, its proximity to biotech and biom manufacturing uses in the city of Worcester, very close nearby, but at a much higher tax rate, and its proximity to Route 290 with good access there, and to therefore 495 and Route 90, and therefore the entire infrastructure system that we have. I'd be glad to answer any particular questions that the committee may have.
Thank you, Mr. Donahue. Um, I see Mark Adler has a question. Mr. Adler?
Uh, yes, thank you, uh, Judy. Hello, Mr. Uh, Donahue. Um, it's exciting to see the transformation of what used to be Worcester Sand and Gravel, and I've been following it, um, and I'm excited to see what's going to happen with it. I'm certainly not concerned with this project, with this change, and I'm very happy to hear that the wells will be, um, well managed, um, and protected. Uh, that was my biggest concern when I first heard about this transfer of the property. Um, was it like five months ago, four months ago, when this all started? Um, a couple small questions. First of all, do, do your clients also own the triangle of limited industrial land to the west of the residential land that borders, uh, what's that, Worcester and Boylston?
Yes.
And is that part, um, i- is there any development planned for that as well, once this matches that same kind of zoning?
Uh, that, it's really pre, uh, early in the process to say what, how the site is best developed in any kind of fashion, as you indicated, sir. Uh, the acquisition only happened in February, and obviously efforts, uh, have been delayed, both in, in an effort to find out the appropriate zoning and in COVID. So I, I wouldn't want to say yes or no for sure. Uh, the site will be looked at in a holistic fashion to try to figure out the best way to develop it, and to continue to operate the, the Worcester, now called Sand and Stone Operation, uh, as there is an intent to continue that operation, just to consolidate it.
And, uh, Judy, if I can follow a question to, um, to Kristen. Um, Kristen, based on your experience, um, with these sorts of zoning changes of commercial and industrial, uh, zones, intermixed, or neighboring with residential zones, um, is, has there been any concern by the abutters in the rural B2 neighborhood, or, um, the residential B2 neighborhood that basically Clinton Street and its environs, and to a much lesser extent, uh, Sewell Street, because there's really not, lesser extent, because there's not as many houses there?
Sure. Through the chair, if I may?
Yes, please.
This article has been before the Planning Board for several public hearings. Um, additionally, Mr. Donahue and his team have reached out to the abutters, uh, to let them know about the potential zoning change, and to see if anybody wanted to, uh, join per se, to rezone their property, deliver it industrial as well. So there has been public outreach, and to the best of my knowledge, there has not been any, um, opposition to the zoning change. Uh, Mr. Donahue did attend those Planning Board meetings, so if I'm misstating, he could certainly correct me. Um, and as he stated before, um, if any development does come forward, it would certainly be, um, go through the Planning Board process in which abutters would be notified within 300 feet. Um, really don't see, um, from a planning perspective, and in terms of our master plan, that this corridor would ever really be developed for commercial type of businesses. It's really better suited, uh, planning and land use-wise for industrial type of uses, in our opinion.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the committee? Uh, Mr. Garcia?
Hi, thank you. Um, so I actually am an abutter. Um, I live on Pond Ave, so I'm kind of in between, um, both of these pieces of land that you've acquired. Um, so I received the letter that you had sent out to abutters, um, several months ago, I think now. Um, and from what I understood, I believe that you also acquired a few residential properties. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And, um, would you be able to provide, I don't know if you have it right now, but would you be able to provide us those? Was it a lot of residential properties, or was it just a few?
I- it's not a few, but as it relates to the, um, the, the warrant article in question, none of the previously or existing residentially-zoned property is sought to be changed in any fashion. Uh, those were residential or individual parcels that were already in the Commercial Business District. Um, and so that, to the extent that there were other properties in the Worcester Sand and Gravel holdings that were within the residential, uh, those are not part of Article 36 and continue to just be owned as part of the portfolio.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the committee? Seeing none. Any questions, comments from the staff?
Ms. Vetter?
Mr. Mis, Mr. Misakar?
Um, just hearing, uh, Mr. Garcia's comments, and I do apologize, uh, for not understanding this in advance of the meeting. Uh, given that he is a direct abutter, I would, uh, recommend out of abundance of caution that he recuse himself for, uh, the recommendation on this article later. I just wanted to state that during this conversation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the staff? Ms. Lasz?
Um, just wanted to close out the Planning Board process, so the Finance Committee understands that, um, the, the Planning Board has had several public hearings related to this matter. They will have their fa, final public hearing related to this matter on August 6th, and then provide their letter of recommendation to both the Finance Committee and Town Meeting, uh, and Town Clerk at that time. So the Planning Board has not made a recommendation at that time. So again, I can remind you when we get ready for the recommendations, but we traditionally hold the zoning recommendations until, uh, after the Planning Board has made that, and we can have a special meeting Saturday morning, um, August 8th to finalize your recommendations.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from the staff? Uh, seeing none, um, any questions, comments from the public? Seeing, seeing none, we will now move on to Article 38. Mr. Misakar?
Madam Chair, could you just remind me, is this the donation bin bylaw? I don't have, I'm sorry. I'm a little behind.
It is.
Alright, thank, thank you. I appreciate that. Um, unfortunately, Mr. DiPaolo is unable to join us this evening, uh, in time for this presentation, so I will just provide a staff-level overview. Uh, Mr. DiPaolo, as a selectman, has worked diligently on the creation of this bylaw, worked with residents to receive their input. The underlying goal of this bylaw is to create a regulatory framework for which donation or collection bins are, are able to operate throughout the community. Uh, the establishment of this general bylaw requires an application process through the Board of Selectmen, and allows the Board of Selectmen to have oversight and, um, take action should, um, donation bins in the surrounding areas not be, uh, managed in a cleanly and favorable way that elicits an environment, uh, that's beneficial to the community. So, um, that's a brief summary of, of the bylaw, which is, uh, two pages. It's a $55 application fee, uh, all managed through the Board of Selectmen and the staff, and, um, puts a little more teeth in, uh, to this process and these type of operations, uh, throughout the community, which, uh, can often be an eyesore and a challenge.
Thank you, Mr. Misakar. Um, any comments or questions from the committee? I, for one, would like to thank Mr. DiPaolo for, to putting this article together. I think that this is going to be a, a good step forward for the town, uh, given the fact that, um, I daily get to look at an eyesore, so hopefully, um, this will keep others from needing to do so. Any other questions or comments from the committee? Any questions, comments from the staff? Seeing none. Any questions, comments from the public? Seeing none. Um, we'll now move on to Article 30. Mr. Molina?
Let me come. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear, I can hear you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, uh, may I present?
Yes. Uh, Kristen, do you have to do anything to allow him to present, or?
He should be allowed to share a screen.
Yep, I see the presentation now button there. So thank you very much. Okay, please let me know if you can see that slide page.
No, we do not see it.
Mr. Molina, do you have multiple screens in front of you?
I do not, but I believe now it's coming through, right?
Yep.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Just want to go to your slide presentation.
Perfect. Thank you. All set? Thank you. Uh, good evening, everybody. Um, I'm Jason Molina, representing the Community Preservation Shrewsbury Ballot Committee, and our presence tonight is to talk about Article 30 on the, on the town warrant. So to begin, I wanted to speak about what is the Community Preservation Act, and that is an act which allows communities who adopt it to establish funds dedicated for recreation, open space, historic preservation, and affordable housing. And these categories are hard to fund, given municipal funding challenges that we're all very familiar with. So as far as who, who else has adopted Community Preservation Act across Massachusetts, 177 communities have adopted it, including some of the comparable towns that we're pretty much familiar with, like Northborough, Southborough, Westboylston, Holliston, Medway, and Grafton. In terms of what CPA can fund, uh, you can see, uh, along the top is the categories that I mentioned earlier that CPA addresses, like open space, recreation, historic, and affordable housing. And along the left-hand side are the action verbs at which the legislation specifically calls out about what is allowable or not. So you can see where those check marks intersect is where you can fund, uh, that activity from, uh, using CPA funds. For example, acquiring open space or preserving historic, uh, artifacts and, and buildings, um, to supporting affordable housing, which is created using CPA funds. As regarding to what we can do with that money from, from CPA, um, I will just touch on a few examples across these four categories. So in terms of recreation, some very popular activities, uh, the other towns have undertaken is over, uh, rehabilitating their overdue school and neighborhood playgrounds, including making them ADA compliant. And also rehabilitating our, in Shrewsbury particularly, um, a lot of interest in renovating baseball and lacrosse field, um, that is in need of irrigation, shade shelters, and new lighting. Uh, some folks have expressed interest in dog park, and also creating additional walking and bike trails, especially if there's a possibility to unify them across, uh, properties, to make them the longer trails. In regard to open space, uh, we could restore ponds and lakes plagued by invasive species, weeds, that is, and, uh, we already be, or we are already paying for, um, some invasive weed control on Lakeland Sigeben. So here's an opportunity to have that activity paid for by CPA. Uh, additionally, uh, should land become available that it's offered to the, to the town, uh, to purchase, that we could look specifically to target, uh, acquiring land for our public water supply. And of course, if CPA monies, um, if the land purchase was a significant amount of CPA monies can be bonded, uh, to make that, that purchase. Um, in terms of historic preservation, we could preserve qualifying historic buildings and artifacts, restore historic gravestones in our, um, historic cemetery, and then all, obviously, uh, looking at our historical town records, which, uh, could be preserved and digitized for easy access. And then on the affordable housing perspective, uh, we could create low-income and, and low-income senior or veteran housing, and acquire and repurpose historic structures for affordable housing. And lastly, uh, we could be making progress on additional affordable housing stock to our specific liking in Shrewsbury to address the minimum threshold needs for 40B. As far as how CPA is funded, um, the legislation allows for a surcharge of not more than 3% of the real estate tax bill. And the state also incentivizes communities that adopt CPA by, by providing a annual variable match distribution from the statewide Community Preservation Trust Fund. And that trust fund is actually, uh, is a, is folks that have been, uh, making transactions with, with purchasing homes or refinancing, we have already been paying into that trust fund through the register of deeds transactions. So the committee is proposing specifically for Shrewsbury that we adopt CPA with local funding of 1% on the real estate tax bill, and including allowable exemptions per the legislation, which are low-income exemptions, I'm sorry, accepting, uh, low-income residents, exempting low-to-moderate income seniors, and then also, uh, in terms of lowering the, the surcharge amount, $100,000 of the real estate value for residential, Class III commercial, and Class IV industrial for the purposes of calculating the surcharge. Uh, our interest is to, uh, is to see that Town Meeting allow voters to decide whether they can support it. And, um, the Town Meeting and future ballot referendum could be had to either adjust or revoke adopting CPA in the future. Regarding the cost of property owners, um, this table shows the examples from 200 to 400, 600 to 800, um, and in the middle there is the average single-family property value. So for that average single-family property owner, the cost to them would be $47.21 for the year. Now, I mentioned earlier that there are exemptions for those low-income, uh, property owners. Um, so the table here just provides an example of, um, household sizes, one, So the table here just provides an example of household sizes 1 through 4, and folks that have that fit those income levels limits, I should say, could qualify to get exempted from the CPA surcharge. In addition, the middle table there shows examples for moderate income seniors if they seek to request to have an exemption on the CPA surcharge. And lastly, any existing tax exemptions are not impacted. As far as the, what can we gain from from all these monies? The CPA point percent surcharge is estimated to generate over $500,000 annually, and Shrewsbury will receive that annual variable match, which will be on top of the local money, to then total monies that are available for projects year over year. And opted in, as I mentioned earlier, would enable Shrewsbury to receive that distribution from the state fund. And so in terms of that, the state funds we're currently missing out on because we have not adopted CPA, this table shows, sorry, this chart shows the progression of some towns, for example, just to say how much they've received over time. So if we look at the second column there for Norwood, all the way up to Northborough, we can see the progression in the orange about how much they have accumulated from the state. This is free money they receive for adopting CPA. Norwood coming in, starting in 2018, by that time, by now, they've received 261,000. Canton, that's 750,000. And moving on the line, we see 1.4 million, 1.8, 2, and 2.3 million. And if Shrewsbury had adopted last year, had adopted it previously, I should say, last year alone, Shrewsbury could have seen $115,000. And of course, the longer we stay in CPA, the more monies we would get from the state. In terms of project approval process, community groups, residents, and town departments can raise project proposals, and it's not limited to those groups, but I just give as an example. A project proposal comes into a new committee called the Community Preservation Committee, or CPC, and they're going to review those project proposals to ensure it fit for purpose, that it's, it falls within the guidance of CPA, that it falls against, it has sound funding proposals as well. And there could also be mixture of all the monies, whether privately funded, fundraising, or other state monies that were made available, given what the project is calling for. And then those those projects that are, that clear the CPC would then get, be sent to town meeting for for review and approval, if that was the will of town meeting. And finally, we believe that the town meeting, FinCom, and others would, should vote yes on CPA. CPA was enacted in 2000, and it continues to pay out. CPA also enables us to follow through on strategic plans, such as the open space and recreation plans, the master plans of 2001 to 2016 call out CPA, and also housing production plans from 2012 and 2019 also call out one form or another, looking at CPA as an opportunity to meet those needs. The effective date of of adopting CPA would be July 1st, 2021, so in in advance, well in advance of outside of COVID, hopefully. And your yes vote would allow the voters to decide if they can adopt CPA on November 3rd. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Molina. Any questions or comments from the finance committee? Aaron Howard?
Yes. You said that the match from the state is variable, I believe. What, how does it vary? What is, is it, is it strictly a match on what we take in, or is there some other criteria for determining how much it is?
Sure, no problem. So I mentioned earlier that the state trust fund is funded by transactions at the register of deeds, so it is self-funding, so if there are, if there's a downturn in the number of transactions across the state at the register of deeds, then the pool is smaller, and then if we have really good times, then a lot of transactions are happening. So it is really the funds that come into the to the register of deeds explicitly for CPA trust fund, that that those monies are are pooled together and then divvied out to the communities that have adopted CPA. There is three, a three-tiered funding structure. Communities that adopted the full amount of 3% will receive the maximum amount of maximum amount possible from the state. Communities under 3% only get the first round of funding. If CPA, if Shrewsbury had adopted CPA last year's contribution from the state, I'm sorry, at the 1% rate that which we're proposing, Shrewsbury would have seen 23.9% return. Now, that's not a guarantee. I will, you know, just admit that the first few years of CPA, there was few communities, and the state was offering 100% match, dollar for dollar, for what we've raised locally. And then over time, additional communities came on board to adopt it. Fast forwarding to now, of course, this is an extraordinary year, and so I don't think we can expect to have 23.9% like last year, but the Department of Revenue has posted recently an estimate of 11%, thereabout, for this year for those communities that are under 3%. Of course, again, this is extraordinary year. Last year was was a much better return, and I will say that in terms of commitment, last year, the Massachusetts legislation had approved the, but when they say the, you know, the governor assigned into the budget to include increases at the Department of the Register of Deeds to stand up the CPA trust fund. So there is strong commitment by the by the governor and legislation to keep CPA going. So that's where we stand with the rates.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the finance committee? Mr. Adler?
Thank you, Judy. Jason, hi, thank you, this is a great process, it's a good way to raise funds for projects that aren't going to get the kind of priority that they need in, even in good times, let alone difficult times. And I also appreciate the exemptions and the exceptions to make this a broad-based program and making it fair for the whole community. I have a question about the process by which the funds are spent. If you can back up a slide, I think, from what we're looking at now. Yes, this one. So it's, it looks like a project is brought to the committee, and then the committee bring, effectively brings the project to town meeting.
Yes.
Okay. Who, who's this committee? How is it appointed? How is it made?
Sure, if you may, I do have appendix slides that I can use for reference.
Oh, no, 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 no.
It's one slide. Okay, it's one slide, it's one slide, it's one slide.
We've got a long meeting, Jason.
That's okay, nope. CPC is nine, is is going to be proposed to be nine members. We will take up a bylaw after the ballot referendum, if it's successful, to address the members of CPC. The statutory members of the Conservation Commission, Planning Board, Historic Commission, Housing Authority, and Parks and Cemetery Commission, and that's one member each. And then optionally, four additional members. Again, the bylaw would be sought after if the ballot referendum was successful. And then also, in terms of monies, there is a, there's a rule that says that CPA monies must be allocated 10% to housing, 10% to open space and recreation, and 10% to historic. And then the balance is a, isn't a restricted, but unrestricted for, in terms of those categories, but still part of the CPA restriction, it must be part of CPA projects in order to be allocated.
Okay, Kevin, is this presentation in our Google folder? Is there, or is there some way for us all to have a copy of it for the details sake?
We can certainly ask Mr. Molina to provide it over.
Can you provide it over, please?
Will do.
Yeah, we'll take it for the minutes as well, and we'll post it for the finance committee as soon as we receive it.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. And Judy, can I follow up with one last thing, and then I'll back off on this? There was a question also on that process of how the funds are allocated. So let's say you gave a couple of nice examples, like fixing broken plots, broken stones in the cemetery, or working something in the park. That committee doesn't, like, would that bypass the Parks and Recreation Program? Would there be some input from the town administrators? Or is this some other way to to do that? Would it, would, at least would their input be brought in on that or any other project that had that kind of effect?
We we believe there's, there would be adequate representation from the town, the town bodies that that would be impacted by CP, by CPA. As you see on screen here, the Parks and Cemetery Commission would already have a representative sitting, as a sitting member of the CPC, to speak on any of those projects. And and if the town, let's say if the Parks and Cemetery Commission itself wants to bring forward a project proposal, they can, they can do that, and it'll just be weighed against other other project proposals that come before the committee.
I'm just saying, though, that if there was a project that involved, that was a Parks project right now, and the Parks Department had the money, the Parks Department would decide to do it, and the Parks Department would do it. But now, if it went through CPC, the Parks Department would have one vote on a committee of nine people. They could, you know, for them to, they're, they're effectively, they're losing a little bit of control over their project. There are only now just one vote in a larger system.
I think the the beauty of CPA is that if you'd like to take, take advantage of the monies that are allocated in that regard, you would be also leveraging free state money because we've adopted it. So I think it's only fair that if if you, if you're going to tap into a bucket of money that's also available to three other, two other categories, that it does get the the review across the board. And you can certainly, and that group can advocate certainly for that, for that project. Whereas if you'd left it in the municipal budget, you'd be paying 100% of that, that project through the municipal budget. And it's also challenging when you, when you put, you know, do I fix this, you know, this playground or install irrigation systems at, you know, the lacrosse field at Lake Street, when you have all the issues hitting the municipal budget, which, you know, are bigger rocks in town? So if you don't have the monies available anyway, if you want to get this project done, you're going to, and if it's within CPA, you know, acceptable projects, it's, I would see it as a blessing to go to CPA and say, hey, CPC rather, we have this need, we know we're not going to be able to fund it over the municipal side because there's just too many challenges there, but this is still an equality of life project that people want to have, and let's, let's see if we can adopt it here.
Okay, thank you very much, Jason. And Judy, thank you for the time, sorry to take so much of it.
Thank you, Mr. Adler. Any other questions or comments from the finance committee? Mr. Garcia?
I just have one. In one of your slides, you showed the map of all the communities that have adopted the CPA. I was wondering if you could share, or you had any knowledge of any communities that have adopted it during this pandemic?
Yes, good, good, good question. We are, we're pretty pleased to to know that West Stockbridge adopted it on June 30th. This is the voters of that town, not not just town meeting, adopted CPA. And on June 2nd, air, already had CPA, but they increased their surcharge from 1% to 3%. So so those voters decided to dig deeper into their pockets to support themselves on that. And of course, they also would get more, more back from the state, that that maximum amount. So that's really good news. And then also, the legislative bodies for Framingham, Franklin, Greenfield, and Lancaster have decided to put CPA on the ballot, on the ballot for November. So we're, we're pretty jazzed up to to know that other communities are saying yes to CPA, even during COVID.
And then if I may ask a follow-up? Have any communities decided to either lower their surcharge or remove themselves from the CPA during this time?
There is a, there is a ballot question that is going to be lowering the CPA surcharge in one community on November. I don't have that in front of me right now, which community that is, but to date, I would say that since 2000, no community has successfully revoked CPA. So a number of two communities have increased or decreased their surcharge, but never have revoked CPA.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the committee? All right, seeing none, any questions, comments from the staff?
Madam Chair? Thank you for the opportunity to comment. I just wanted to point out just a couple of things and give my perspective on this. I find it very challenging to speak against the opportunity for new revenue that would come into the community, certainly in challenging times. We look for all opportunities to find new ways of funding, and in Massachusetts, it's very limited. But my biggest concern right now is the prioritization of of other projects that have been forwarded, committed to by the town, that were, that have been in the pipeline. Primarily, that is the construction of a new police station. Town meeting supported as a part of the fiscal year 20 capital plan, $250,000, and we secured another $50,000 from the state grant to pursue a feasibility study on the municipal campus and have really focused in on the reconstruction or the construction of a new police station. Like the police station, you know, CPA would have an upward pressure on the tax rate. And given the fact that we have a 1972 police station that was renovated 24 after, 24 years after its construction, and now has been 24 years since its renovation, I do not want to put anything related to that project in jeopardy. And I see this pro, this project and this initiative as challenging and competing against the police station. And from my perspective, the limited amount of funds that it would raise is not worth putting that project in jeopardy, although there are many things that we could possibly do with this. I think that the police station is the most important financial priority lying ahead. And our police department has been very patient in waiting for those upgrades after numerous other projects have taken precedent because of other opportunities that were presented to the town. Along with that, the Board of Selectmen originally undertook public hearings on this matter right after the adoption or the ability to adopt CPA in January of 20, or 2001, they deliberated this process, and after a series of public hearings, decided not to move forward on it, certainly a long time ago, but I just wanted everyone to recall that conversation that the Board of Selectmen had and has chose not to bring this forward. And further, if it is adopted, there's no opportunity to back out of it for at least five years. So again, just lining this up in my mind against the police station and putting a potential hurdle in place for that project on the same ballot is not desirable, and I would not recommend moving forward with this article. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Misekar. Mr. Molina, just to be clear, if the, if the finance committee and town meeting voted yes, then this would go on the ballot?
That is correct.
Okay, just wanted to be clear on process. Any other questions, comments from the staff? Any questions, comments from the public? Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Molina. We are now going to move on to the operating budget financials, town and school, Article number two. Mr. Misekar?
Excuse me?
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Uh, yes. Yes, Hannah?
Madam Chair?
Who's addressing me?
This is Gail Aslanian, Precinct 1. I'd like to speak on the last article.
Yeah, absolutely, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay.
There's no video, I couldn't figure where it was coming from. Thank you, I'm sorry. Please go ahead.
There's a bit of a delay anyway, so I apologize if I didn't get in quick enough. My name is Gail Aslanian, Precinct 1, 285 Main Street, and I want to thank you for the opportunity tonight to to talk on this. There's not a whole lot I can say after Mr. Molina's wonderful presentation. I think he clarified everything, the positives of the, of having a CPA. And I would like to encourage the committee to recommend this article. I think that CPA is an effective tool for municipalities to fund projects that the residents want without tapping into all the, our municipal budget. As Mr. Molina has mentioned, CPA projects are often projects which do not get funded from municipal budgets, and with additional funding from the state, it seems like a win-win situation. Although I respect the manager's comments regarding timing, I, I give the town people a lot more credit maybe than than others do, because I think they, they value the importance of a new police station as well as a CPA. And I think we can balance that out. We can say that's not a good timing, but we've been saying that for 20 years, and we've missed out on hundreds of thousands of dollars from the states and and many projects that went unfunded. So I think it's the responsibility of of the taxpayers to make the decision as to whether they want a CPA or not, and that's the whole purpose of of this ballot referendum, is to let them make the decision. So again, I strongly feel that So again, I strongly feel that you should recommend the Article 30 and and let the taxpayers have their voices to, uh, where they'd like to put their. $47, okay? Thank you very much.
Uh, thank you for your comments. Can you once again, um, repeat your name and your address? I didn't catch that at the beginning.
Sure, Gail Aslanian, Precinct One, 285 Main Street.
Okay, thank you, Gail.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the public that would like to comment? Okay, going once, twice? Okay, then we are going to now move on to the operating budget, uh, financials, town and school, um, Article Number Two, Mr. Muzikar?
Great, uh, thank you for the opportunity again. Uh, I will share my screen and go through several slides. Um, just to remind everyone from last night, um. That we talked about COVID costs and with regards to the town side, and I know that the schools will want to make some comments on those, but. My comments will be, um, related to solely to the operating budget at this point since we covered that. So. Give me one more second and. Okay, so now that's up. So with regards to fiscal year, uh. 21 budget, we will, uh, talk about fis, uh, fiscal projection two, which is the second version of the budget. Which has been changed since your, um. February and March public hearings. Um, we'll go through a revenue overview and an expenditure overview. We'll focus a little bit of time, uh, where personnel changes have been made within the different functional areas of the town. And I'll, uh, also note other, uh, significant changes within the budget so that the committee hopefully can follow the changes. Um, since we, uh, last dove into the budget. Um, so first and foremost, we'll start with the revenues. Um, we've seen significant changes and it had to, uh, reduce the amount of revenues that were projected for fiscal year. Because of, uh, COVID-19 and the financial situation that the Commonwealth and, and nation finds itself in. Uh, that has led to, uh, almost a $4 million reduction in, uh, revenues. And, um, those, uh, revenue reductions are really in almost every category, uh, that you see presented in the, the top right corner of the screen. Uh, the tax levy, uh, has been, uh. Changed because of our, uh, projection that we'll receive, uh, less or there will be less new growth. Um, state aid is a, a question mark, um, given the state's deliberation on the budget and, uh, uncertainty with regards to their revenue situation. And we've taken a, uh, moderate and what I will call consistent approach in comparison to other municipalities. By decreasing our total state aid by, uh, almost seven percent, um, with, um. Uh, a, a split between, uh, the amount of Chapter 70 revenue that we're going to receive being less and unrestricted general aid. Those are the two largest categories of aid. Um, there's certainly, uh, detailed analysis that we've done on both of those. Uh, given the fact that we lump all of our revenues together in that single bucket, um. I won't go into a lot of detail about that. Um, I'm pleased with the conversations that I mentioned last night that we've been having with the school committee. We have a plan, uh, and are optimistic that if any additional revenues would come in, how we'd share those between the town and school budgets. And I'll just note right now that our intention would be for the, any additional state aid that comes in for the first $600,000 to go to the schools. And then every dollar thereafter would be shared, uh, 50/50 between, uh, you know, uh, the town side and the school side. Our utility revenues are also projected about $300,000 lower, as we noted last night. Um, that is an estimate based, uh, and, uh, we're hoping that lagging revenues is the cause of less revenues in fiscal year. Um, 21, sorry, I didn't realize I didn't have my. Full screen up. There we go. Sorry about that. Um, and, um. We're optimistic that, uh, since it's a rate-based consumption, uh, type revenue source that we're able to, uh, achieve better than we projected. Uh, local receipts, uh, certainly a direct economic impact whenever you consider things like. Uh, motor vehicle purchases, uh, meals, tax, hotel motel tax, investment, income revenue. Uh, building permits, all of those things contribute to our local receipts. Uh, and therefore, we, uh, have taken, uh, almost, uh, $1.3 million out of local receipts, a significant reduction. Uh, in comparison to where we were earlier this year. With regards to free cash, um, I have a kind of a blown up, um. Explanation of the changes that were made to free cash in the role we're right here in order. And, um, I'd just like to talk about those for a couple of seconds. With regards to how we had originally planned to use, um, free cash. Uh, in a series of Warren articles that included funding of outside entities like SYFS and Lake Quinsigamlee Commission, which we discussed last night. Um, the other largest funded articles, uh, Warren article was, uh, $835,000. It was going to be transferred or requested to be transferred from free cash into the stabilization account. We have, um, changed, uh, our direction on that. Uh, it doesn't seem prudent to put funds into the stabilization account. We've redirected an equal amount of $835,000 into the operating budget to, uh, reduce. Uh, the number of reductions that have to be made because of our lesser revenue projection. Um, the, uh, capital improvement plan has been reduced by $776,000 that we went through in detail last night. Uh, you'll see that, uh, nearly dollar for dollar, uh, just a rounding, uh, difference there. That that $835,000 that was in the, uh, going into stabilization is now slated for the operating budget. Uh, we plan to use the same amount to reduce the tax levy. So our total use of free cash, uh, will be reduced by $776,029, uh, through this plan. The reduction of the levy, uh, remains identical, uh, other available funds. Uh, which is, uh, mainly the funding that comes in from Selco. We are going to partner with them on a part-time custodian position, but that. Did not come to fruition, so that, uh, represents the amount of money that they contribute to debt service schedule. And then the cable access funding that comes in through Selco and passes out to SMC, uh, remains the same. Moving on to a high-level overview of expenditures, um, unfortunately, you'll see similarly reductions in nearly every major expenditure category. You'll see the, uh, with the line item at the top on the right-hand side, school municipal expenses. That's the, the operating budgets of all town departments, the school department. Instead of being 126.1 million, it's 120 point, 124.0, uh, reduction of 2.1. Uh, solid waste expenses are lower, uh, and all of our utilities are lower, as we discussed a little bit, uh, last night, with the exception of, uh, stormwater. We found our estimates for cherry sheets and state charges. Our bill for CMRPC and the amount of money that will go into the tax overlay account to, uh, be the same that they are. And then further down, as I've already talked about, because we're adjusting free cash, the capital improvement plan is less. And our other Warren articles are less because of our change in, uh, direction for stabilization. A high-level overview of the, the town side personnel, um. We have done our best to not have to lay off individuals or, uh, reduce positions, but some reductions are necessary. Uh, fiscal projection one, uh, sought to fund 243 and a quarter positions. And this plan proposes 239.18 positions. Um, so it's not a significant change. I have to, uh, again, remind the committee that significant work went into negotiations with the unions. To help reduce their cost of living. The Personnel Board worked with us. Um, to, uh, manage an appropriate cost of living increase for non-union employees. Uh, the department head positions have agreed to a year-long wage freeze. And all of those, uh, dollars have been able to, uh, allow us to maintain, uh, closer to originally projected. Um, FTE levels and nearly identical to the FY20 budget. Um, so unfortunately, we will not grow, uh, and continue to really maintain service levels. Uh, because, uh, that was the trajectory that we were on, uh, given the demands that the department had seen across their operations. I'll now take a couple of minutes and go through each functional area of the budget, and I will, uh, you know, keep it at that level. Rather than being at the department level. Um, I'll remind you that the municipal budget across the board is, um, a little over a million dollars less than, uh, originally was. And, um, I'll look to detail that out and highlight some, uh, some of those personnel changes. The balance of the changes outside of, of personnel, uh, with the exception of those that I'll talk about. Are really sprinkled among all the departments within their expense line items. We went through a series of exercises with departments where we asked them to reduce their budgets anywhere from two and a half to six and a half percent. Once we zeroed in on the revenue model that we're using and feel most comfortable with. Uh, the bounds of, of most apartment budgets, uh, have been reduced somewhere between one and a half and two and a half percent. So with regards to the administration and finance functional area within the operating budget, there's about a $570,000. A decrease in total funding, and there is a, uh, roughly a half, half of a position that falls within the town manager's office. Uh, that has been reduced, uh, management analyst position that's currently vacant, uh, within the manager's office that will not be filled. At least halfway through the year. Also remind the, the committee that, uh, that our trajectory on this budget is, uh, first and foremost, to get us, uh, into the fall several months in advance. Not the whole year in advance, and make any adjustments that are proven at that time based upon our revenue situation. Uh, and hopefully having more information, at least about state aid at that time. Um, with regards to the operating support area of administration and finance, these, uh, accounts largely benefit both town and school operations. Uh, fortunately, uh, a good reduction is a reduction in the amount of money that we had originally planned in fiscal projection one for the group health and life insurance. Uh, we were able to reduce that from 12.7, 12.3, 12.4 million dollars. Uh, that's because of a favorable average rate, uh, increase year over year of about 4.12%. Um, I also have highlighted unemployment compensation. Year over year, we thought we were doing really well and able to reduce $10,000 out of. Uh, fiscal projection one as it compared to the 2020 budget. Uh, if you look back to 2019 and 2018 on the right side of the screen, we're in $40,000 in expenditures. I can tell you, unfortunately, on a daily basis, I received two or three unemployment claims that potentially impact. Uh, the town's payout for unemployment compensation, and that, that has been relentless since the beginning of March, as one can imagine. Once we're in double digits in unemployment across the state, Truesberry is not exempt as an employer, so we've drastically increased that line item. With regards to public safety, there are some cuts within this. Um, being opportunistic within the police department, we have several vacancies, and we will hold those vacancies of three patrol officer positions at least until January 1st. Which, uh, reduces funding of one and a half, full-time equivalents for the years in the police department. There's also a, uh, 50% of an administrative clerk position, uh, that would be reduced out of the police department. Uh, that brings a total public safety reduction from, uh, 107 to 105 FTEs. Uh, that is actually two less than are currently held within, uh, this functional area. Uh, you'll recall, we increased staffing within the fire department and added, uh, the rank of lieutenant and. Uh, from a management perspective and the, given the grant sources of funding, there's just not opportunities to make reduction in that personnel right now. I do have to tip my hat to the fire department for, uh, union for making significant, uh, concessions, somewhat, you know, the largest of any single union. In order to, uh, continue with the forward trajectory of, uh, manning and safety within their department. With regards to pension, uncharacteristically for this town, over the past decade, we're reducing funding that's contributed to the pension system. Uh, unfortunately, it looks closer to bust, uh, for 2022 than, um, actually being able to be fully funded. And that will be a direct result of the financial markets and implications, um, for, um, this, uh, situation related to COVID-19. Um, given the consideration of the extreme stress on, on the operating budget and, um, real difficulties that, um, the school department faces. Uh, the Board of Selectmen had a conversation and, uh, are releasing $400,000 in total from, uh, funds that were going to be, uh, contributed. Um, to these departmental areas, uh, department, uh, these functional areas, excuse me. Um, $300,000 of that, um, was, uh, provided to the school department and $100,000, uh, was retained within the town side operations. To, uh, again, limit the total impact of the revenue reductions. So those are the main areas that I really wanted to touch on, that, that see the, the most significant changes. Um, there are certainly some limitations and reductions across, uh, community services and public works aspect, functional areas. But they're much more limited than any of these other areas. I'd be happy to take any questions that, um, the committee may have and provide further clarity into our plan for, uh, town departments.
Thank you, Mr. Muzikar. Any questions or comments from Finance Committee members? Mr. Chavro?
Uh, thank you, Ms. Vedder. Uh, Mr. Muzikar, thank you for that great presentation and all the hard work that goes into getting these numbers and, and, and your projection. Uh, I just had a couple of questions. Um, on the first slide, as far as the revenues were concerned, um, the tax levy is, um. Not significantly different from FP1, but the difference between FP1 and FP2 is, is, uh. Not very significant, and I was wondering, um, because, sorry if I missed this from our previous discussions. But I thought, uh, collections as far as mortgages and all were going to be an issue. So, given that most of our tax levy is, is residential, I was wondering, um, how it's so small.
Yeah, so, um, actually, um, revenue collections on the tax side, uh, of our revenue model. Uh, were rather consistent for fiscal year 20. Um, I think, you know, if you look at the property tax as a revenue source for municipalities across the country, it's the most stable. Um, revenue source, uh, if you compare it to the utilization of the sales tax or something else at a local level. Um, it, it weathers economic storms much weather, much, much better than other revenue sources. So, um, since our FY20 collections were, um. Less, you know, they were slightly more than, uh, 1%. We, we only left about one and three quarters of percent uncollected. Um, for the year in total, we didn't see the need, uh, to reduce this. And further, uh, state law allows us to project, uh, at this point in the year and assume a hundred percent tax collection. And we really need to take advantage of that, given the other changes in revenue sources. The, um, 38 or $7,000 that you see reduced from this is, uh, uh, downward direction on new growth. So any, you know, new building projects or, uh, things like additions to a home. Not the increase in the value of existing property, but new, uh, uh, real property that's developed in the community is what contributes to new growth. So we definitely see a decline in that type of activity, just given challenges of doing that type of work and individuals' willingness to exist. We're also kind of between, uh, major project cycles. Uh, while we do have, uh, the Edgemere Drive-In redevelopment, we're certainly not, we, we certainly just benefited from the recent development of Lakeway Commons. And, and the ambulatory surgery centers, uh, center, um, the Shields MRI Center there off of, uh, 290 at Main Street. So we just don't see those projects coming to fruition and further have concerns that some of the smaller investments that kind of add up. Uh, from a, from a residential standpoint, won't come to fruition, given the current economic environment.
Uh, Judy, if I could have one more question?
Certainly.
Yeah, uh, thanks, uh, Mr. Muzikar. That was, that was wonderful. Um, the second question I had was related to, so, um. Uh, I think it's wonderful news that, uh, it, it's not such a drastic, um, reduction, um, of, of FTE. People, given the circumstances, and, and, um, that's great for the, the morale of the town as a whole, then, thank you. But there is, I think, a very minimal reduction of two, you said, close to two. Um, is that, could I just, I just wanted to understand, is that more of part-time workers or permanent workers in terms of, uh, what is being decreased?
Sure, um, so in total, there is a little over, uh, four full-time equivalent positions being reduced. Um, you'll hear, uh, from the, the schools, unfortunately, and that number will, you know. Seem even more insignificant than it, than it feels to me talking about in comparison to the challenges that they're having. Um, these positions are really, um, for the, for the most part, a reduction in hours of part-time positions and a delay in hiring. and a delay in hiring of currently vacant positions. So for instance, the vacant position in the manager's office, a vacant position in the highway department, three vacant patrol officer positions. We're just, we have not provided enough funding within those line items to, to hire them effective July 1st, which is obviously passed. But, you know, we've delayed hiring at least through October 1st for all those other positions. And some of them not until January 1st.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any more questions or comments from the committee? Okay, I see none. Any further questions, comments from the staff? Seeing none. Any further questions or comments from the public? If someone from the public is on the phone, if you want to speak, just let me know. Okay. All right, seeing none, then we will now move on to Article 7. Mr. Mizikar?
Oh, sorry. Ms. Fedder, this would be the opportunity for the school department to make further comments about their aspects of Article 2.
Oh, all right. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Uh, Ms. Fritz, did, did you want to?
Yes.
Are you going to begin? Yes, thank you.
Yep, I'll make, yep. A good evening and thank you, Judy. Much has changed since we met with you on March 7th. The coronavirus pandemic and the lack of an initial state budget from the Massachusetts Legislature has complicated the FY21 budget process. The school department's July 20th revised FY21 budget is $67,499,696. And this budget number was reached after a $1.9 million reduction in program and personnel. On July 22nd last night, due to the current budget circumstances affecting town finances, the school committee felt it was appropriate to vote to approve Mr. Mizikar's recommended school department appropriation of $67,080,000. In addition to the gap between the school department's recommend, recommended budget and town manager's revised budget, there is currently a projected COVID-related revenue loss that will not be covered through the Federal Cares Act funding, which means that currently the school department's current total budget gap is approximately $2 million. At this time, the school department's FY21 budget recommendation does not include making specific reductions to the line item budget to match the bottom line. Instead, the FY21 budget includes an adjustment of $2,2696 in potential future reductions to the school department line item budget. This is a balanced budget approach and it allows us to open schools with the needed staffing and personnel to provide educational services. The school committee does recognize this budget plan will need to be adjusted during the upcoming fiscal year. And with the understanding that if cost mitigation efforts, which are ongoing as well as hopeful increased revenues do not materialize, in the in-year budget reductions may need to be required to meet the approved bottom line budget. The school committee is highly supportive of this budget approach as it is a prudent, thoughtful response to a very difficult and fluid budget process. Mr. Collins and Dr. Sawyer will now provide you with the details of the school department's FY21 budget.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Mr. Mizikar, for putting the slides up. Good evening, finance committee and town meeting members and, and members of the public who are joining or watching. I'm Joe Sawyer, the superintendent of schools. Introduce to you Patrick Collins, who's the assistant superintendent for finance and operations for the school district. We're going to take you through a brief slide deck to provide some detail that we'll be dealing with the budget situation at this, at this time for the recommendation, recommendation for town meeting. You go to the next slide, please. So the topics we'll cover tonight, we'll give you a brief update on the school reopening planning that we're in the midst of right now. We'll estimate our current budget gap with some specifics. We'll talk about some ongoing labor negotiations with our unions for cost mitigation. We will be talking about sort of the sequence of how we've arrived to this point. And then we'll talk about this pathway of balanced risk that we believe is in our best interest at this point, as well as the downside, because obviously any risk assessment has pluses and minuses. Next slide, please. So as far as school reopening planning, and you can't avoid this in the news, whether you're looking at the newspaper or anything online or television or radio, right now, we are working in accordance with the guidance we've received from the State Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. In order to develop, we have to submit to them by July 31st an initial plan of how we would approach three different models of education during the coming year. And the reason that the state is requiring us to look at three different models is because depending on the evolution of the pandemic, we may be using any or all of them at different points during the school year. One would be full remote learning, which was the mode we were in from mid-March through the end of the school year. The next would be a hybrid or alternating schedule kind of approach, where students would have some in-person days and some remote days on a schedule in order to have fewer students onsite at one time and facilitate greater physical distancing. And the third would be a full in-person education with as many students who are willing to come to school. The state's also been clear that families who wish to have their students remain in full remote learning need to be given that option. So we'll be having some kind of hybrid model to some degree. Excuse me. But that will involve some, some remote learning. The question is sort of the in-person piece and our, we have teams working very diligently over the past couple of weeks on a reopening task force with several subcommittees. And we'll be making a, asking the school committee to make a decision for which plan we will open the school year with at their meeting on August 5th. The last bullet on this slide says this is a complicated, multifaceted and ever-changing situation. It is clear to me that this is the most complex and demanding work that any of us who are school leaders or educators have done in our careers. But I am confident that given the incredible educators and leaders that we have, we will figure out the best pathway forward in consultation with our families. We've had some feedback from our families already. We'll be getting more feedback as we develop our plans more fully in the coming days and weeks. So it is a significant challenge. We don't have all the answers yet, but that's work that's under, being undertaken right now. Next slide, please. The three key messages we've been sharing with the community regarding this work. First, of course, the health and wellbeing of our students, our families and our staff is priority number one. Our focus for this coming year is really providing a safe school environment. That's for all of our students and all of our staff. Prioritizing everyone's wellbeing and enabling high levels of learning for all, however we can under the circumstances we face. And again, we're planning based on guidance from DESI, while closely monitoring both the information from medical experts, which of course, there, there was a lot of agreement, but some areas of conflict even among medical experts, as well as the evolving data regarding the pandemic in our state, in county, and here in Truesbury itself. Next slide, please. As far as the budget to support this work, it's obviously a very difficult year. It was already a difficult year, as you know, from our presentation to you in March, just prior to the pandemic hitting. But the pandemic has made it that much more difficult. The school committee did vote last evening to recommend a school department appropriation, which matches Mr. Mizikar's recommendation of $67,080,000. This represents an increase of about $778,000 over the last fiscal year, which equates to 1.17%. And as a finance committee, you certainly know that for the school department, given the inflationary costs that are baked into the kind of operation we have, particularly with personnel, a budget of just over 1% is going to be a budget that's going to require reductions. And it's really important to note that this recommendation, the school committee voted last night, is made with the understanding that we still need to close this $2 million gap that Ms. Fritz referred to earlier over the course of the fiscal year. And that will happen through a combination of cost mitigation measures and/or additional revenue in order to maintain staff and educational programming. And we can speak more to that as we go forward. But at this point, I will turn it over to Mr. Collins. And he'll take you through some more specifics relative to the budget gap that we're estimating at this time.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Sawyer. And I apologize in advance that my video is not working on my laptop for this particular virtual platform. But in terms of this particular display here that you see in front of you, I, I guess I first want to say that I think that navigating a very difficult budget year pre-COVID and then having COVID hit us in trying to estimate all of the impact costs of COVID. And then in addition to that, COVID-related revenue losses provides for a very complicated situation. But I appreciate the leadership of Mr. Mizikar to try to clear some of that fog and, and kind of just move forward in a more clear and simplified fashion by setting aside, if you will, COVID-related costs with the understanding that both the town and school department have received federal stimulus funding to cover some of those costs up through December 30th. So as Mrs. Fritz mentioned, you know, without COVID-related costs, the, the school department budget was resting at a level of, in the order of $67.5 million or at about $419,000 more than Mr. Mizikar's latest recommendation. But when you layer on top of that, the fact that we are right now expecting some decrease in state aid, that's the special education circuit breaker decrease at $465,000. That's a program that we get direct reimbursement for high-cost special needs students. And that reimbursement can vary based upon the level of state appropriation on an annual basis. And it's unclear right now what that level of reimbursement will be. In addition to that, the other revenue-related losses that we're projecting are local revenue losses. We are a so-called relatively high fee district, meaning that we charge students for bus fees, student activity fees, athletic fees, full-day kindergarten tuition, preschool tuition, and music lessons, things like that, also gate receipts here. We rely on athletic event gate receipts to help offset costs for officials and the like. So, you know, we need to plan for those losses. And it's certainly going to depend, the level of loss is going to depend on our operating status, which again, is unclear right now and certain to vary throughout the course of the year. So those two things combined are really what give you this estimated level of about a $2 million gap. And we've done multiple models on this. This is just one. This isn't meant to be. While there are very discrete numbers here, you know, we've, we've been engaged in doing, you know, seven, eight different modeling scenarios in iterations of the same thing. And this is what we think right now is kind of a middle ground approach. Next slide, please.
At this point, I do want to share that, as Mr. Mizikar mentioned, that they've had some, done work with the unions on the municipal side departments. The school committee is engaged in dialogue with several of our labor unions that's been ongoing. The goal, of course, is to seek some compensation adjustments to some existing labor contracts to decrease costs in, in order to preserve jobs. And by preserving jobs, we can maintain educational programming, avoid further compromising learning and teaching conditions. And given the situation with what we're trying to plan for, for the fall under, under the COVID situation, having all hands on deck is more important than ever. Without mitigation of costs to reduce that estimated budget gap, we will have to make further significant cuts in staffing. And just to remind those watching, I know the finance committee is aware, but we have made, prior to this, 29.6, almost 30 full-time equivalent positions had been cut from our budget plan for next year or prior to getting to this point. That's the equivalent of about $1.9 million. And then for illustrative purposes, the, the gap that we, still remains, the $2 million gap. And I want to be very clear again, this is not a plan. This is just to illustrate the order of magnitude of what we're facing. To close a $2 million gap, we would need to cut about 30 teaching positions or about 78 paraprofessional or aid positions. Again, that's not the plan that we have, but $2 million represents a lot of costs for us. And because we've already cut back significantly, as you recall from our presentation in March, on a whole variety of operational areas in terms of curriculum, instruction, and various ways that we can shave costs in order to preserve positions, we don't have much else, many places to go other than personnel if we have to make substantial reductions. I am hopeful for that cost mitigation will move forward with our, our unions and partnership with them. We'll know more about that hopefully in the coming days and weeks, hopefully before town meeting on August 8th. But that is an important part because even if we get additional revenue, which Mr. Collins will speak to in a moment, whether that's a better state budget than is currently projected or whether that's federal stimulus funding, I, I don't see where it's going to close a $2 million gap for us without making cuts somehow during the year. So it's a tenuous situation, but one we, we're hoping we can navigate our way through. So with that, if you go to the next slide, Mr. Collins will illustrate sort of where we're at with those things.
So in terms of trying to navigate through this, again, you well know that information, important information in a, in a complex financial plan isn't really lining up in a sequential manner like we would prefer, but yet we still need to move ahead. And so that, therefore, the school committee has taken the so-called balanced risk approach and made that proposal in agreement with Mr. Mizikar to support a $67,080,000 school department budget for the annual town meeting on August 8th. We know that certainly sometime later, maybe late August or September, that we will receive more definitive and certain information about state aid and also our special education circuit breaker reimbursement program. And then, you know, it would make sense and appreciate the thinking around having a special town meeting in October or later, after the state budget's approved, so that we might adjust our plans. And at that time as well, so we'll not only have state-level information, it's a possibility that we might have more information regarding additional federal stimulus. And then certainly by that point locally, we'll have two other pieces of information, which would be hopefully some results or outcome of labor, union negotiations. And then also have a better understanding of our educational modality and what the cost structure is related to that. So that's why it all will kind of make sense to have this be a two-step process or a second look, if you will, later in the fall. Next slide, please. As was mentioned a couple of times before, it's, you know, we're terming this a balanced risk approach. And, you know, otherwise, in, in a so-called normal year, you know, we would present to you and annual town meeting members, a budget book that is very definitive down to the 10th of FTE about what our plan is. And there's certainly some uncertainty about that going forward into the entirety of the school year. And we're going to have to deal with this estimated $2 million gap. But it really doesn't make sense to try to eliminate a whole bunch of staff to that degree. And then to yet later find out, only a couple of weeks later, that we, we might be able to have some additional funding, especially in the face of opening schools during a pandemic. So we're trying to avoid this accordion action of saying, sorry, we need to eliminate your job. Here's your pink slip. Go file for unemployment. Go, you know, incur some unemployment costs on the, on the municipal side. And then a couple of weeks later saying, oh, good, we got some good news here. We got additional state aid and try to hire them back. We're trying to avoid all of that messiness by taking the so-called balanced risk approach. Next slide, please. And then certainly, you know, there is a potential downside. We're hopeful that of the three possibilities, you know, local, state or federal, that one or two of those at least come through and hopefully all three. And if they don't, if we have a goose egg in all three areas, then we're going to have to adjust to that in the middle of the school year. And the next and last slide, please.
So again, to sum up, the school committee did approve to recommend the appropriation that Mr. that Mr. Mizikar is recommending. You see what the statistics are there in terms of what that represents. And just emphasizing again that this is a budget that could require us to have to make in-year reductions. But we're hopeful that by taking this balanced risk approach, we'll be able to navigate through the first part of the school year and hopefully with a special town meeting in the fall, with some additional revenue available, we'll be able to move forward without having to make those kind of drastic cuts, hopefully no additional cuts at all, crossing our fingers certainly for what the federal government will do to support public education during this time because that's certainly much needed. And with that, we would be happy to take any questions that the committee has. I do want to thank Mr. Mizikar and the Board of Selectmen for their thoughtful approach to provide some, just to get us to the number where they did get us so far by making some of the adjustments they made. And as Mr. Collins said, the clarity that Mr. Mizikar is trying to bring to a process that is very much in flux is appreciated. And particularly, taking this approach really was enabled by the fact that we were able to come to an agreement about if additional state aid comes in, as Mr. Mizikar mentioned in his presentation, that the first $600,000 would come to the school department. I mean, anything after that would be split on a 50-50 basis, which gives us an idea that, you know, if something comes in, we already have a plan. And that's a very thoughtful and prudent way to approach it, I think. So I thank Mr. Mizikar, the Board of Selectmen, and thank you as a finance committee for the support you're providing to us in your role. So with that, we're happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much for your presentation. I do agree with the approach. It certainly doesn't make sense to lay people off and then bring them back when we get funding. I did have one question about the circuit breaker, expecting that to be lower. I guess my question is, given the fact that the state sets the rates of tuition for special education for these out placements, are we seeing, what's happening on that end? Are we seeing any decrease in costs?
I can start to answer that. Mr. Collins could add anything. I mean, there's no decrease in costs in that the tuitions were already set for next year by the state. There's been no adjustment to that. Those schools obviously are experiencing difficulties just like regular public schools are relative to, you know, some issues economically. I know that they just received some funding from the state to deal with some of the COVID costs that they're experiencing to be able to reopen safely or remain open. A lot of these are residential schools that remained open the whole time. And you can imagine some of the challenges it would be, there would be for those institutions. So in terms of the actual costs, we're not going to see reductions there. And if anything, you know, looking ahead to the following year, I don't know what will happen in terms of additional costs that they're going to have to bear, but it's pretty much status quo with what was already set for those rates prior to the shutdown.
All right, thank you. And then I got one other question on transportation. I understand that obviously we're not getting the transportation fee, but were we able to get out of a busing contract or is the busing, so do we still have the busing contract? And then also, are you talking about no fees to also offset the busing that you have to have for special education? Is that where this dealt, where this, is it $700,000, $700, something?
So in terms of transportation, you know, our costs are fixed by contract. We're into, we're into going into, I believe it's year three of a five-year contract. And the, as you mentioned, Mrs. Vedder, the school committee voted to waive the bus fee for the first half of the year. So right now, you know, the annual bus fee revenue from all of the people that have to pay is $750,000. So right off the bat, we can know that at a minimum, $375,000 is gone. But in addition to that, you know, there's probably going to be many fewer riders than there were last year just due to COVID and people's reluctance to ride. So our contract with our vendor is still in place for the previously negotiated rates. And we're just expecting a revenue drop in terms of special need students. If those students have specialized transportation in their individual education plan, of course, they're not subject to a fee, nor are students who are eligible for free or reduced lunch. So there is exemptions for them in the statute.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, comments from the committee? Mr. Chabra.
Thank you, Judy. First of all, thanks to Dr. Sawyer, Mr. Collins, and Ms. Fritz for this wonderful presentation and all the work that you're doing for our schools. I was very happy to see that no additional cuts because I think that the strength of our schools is basically the people we have. And even though we had unavoidable cuts in our previous budget, it's really great to know that going forward, we're going to, you're going to try your best to prevent that from happening. My question is basically, it is going to be unavoidable, I mean, that we're going to see a drop in the quality of learning because of this crisis. And I was wondering, is there any plan going forward when things go, get better to sort of mitigate that drop in quality of learning, if you foresee a drop in quality of learning? It may be too early to quantify that, but I was wondering if that was something you've considered right now.
Sure, I can respond to that, Mr. Chabra. Thank you. I think that there's no doubt that this situation and the closure from March and going forward, whatever model we are able to utilize in the coming year, will have some effects on learning achievement by our students. I think it's really critical that during the first phase of reopening, over the course of the first several weeks, and not exactly sure how long, it's part of our planning right now, a lot of the focus is going to be on building the routines of what it's like to actually be going to school in this new way. It's going to be focusing on the social and emotional needs of our students to get them comfortable again in terms of their learning environment, and of course, providing academic learning. But until we get them settled, so to speak, trying to do assessment or a very focused assessment of their learning would probably be counterproductive. At some point, when that point comes, we're certainly going to be looking to maximize the effectiveness of whatever model we are using in the coming year. And I think that it'll be interesting to see on some other measures that are more typical, depending on what happens. We have Amy Clutter, our Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, has been looking at some different online tools that may provide us with some baseline kinds of assessments that would help us during, once we're at that point during this fall. Frankly, you know, all of our efforts right now are going to how we can safely create a learning environment for the coming fall. But there's no question that we're going to have to look very carefully, Mr. Chabra, at how we can try to recoup anything that's been lost. And of course, one of our greatest concerns is that the students who are most at risk, students with significant learning disabilities, students who are English language learners, students who come from situations where they may have difficulties with their social and emotional growths in the first place. It's virtually certain that this, in an overall sense, that the pandemic will affect them the most. So in terms of trying to figure out, you know, how we can best provide those kinds of supports going forward will be critical for us. But I'm sure that our staff will do an excellent job of that, but I think we're going to have to have patience and we're going to have to be thinking about this kind of in the longer term. You know, in the short term, it's about getting back up and running and creating this new or next normal, as people are saying, and then looking at where we're at. The good news is children are remarkably resilient, and I'm confident, I'm looking at Mr. Murray on my screen, of course, is a runner and a running coach. Unfortunately, sometimes there are athletes who, you know, have an injury and they have to miss time, and you have to be very thoughtful about the way you bring those athletes back from injury. But if you do it right, they're often going to get, you know, regain, you know, those times that they were running before their injury and get even better. And I think we have to take that kind of approach and be really smart about not rushing the recovery. So I hope Mr. Murray appreciates the analogy and I'm happy to answer any further questions on that.
Mr. Murray.
Yeah, thank you, Judy. Judy kind of stole my question about the earlier question about the buses. And Vikram obviously had a question about the education and obviously special education Dr. Sawyer talked about. So I just have a comment. My comment is this, I applaud the school department and the town for really working together and trying to come up with the best possible scenario with their balanced risk You know, it's thoughtful, it's prudent, but more importantly, I think, you know, it's an overused cliche, we're all in this together. Yeah, we are, but we're really seeing it in Shrewsbury. And I think the kids will be grateful and the parents will be grateful. And I thank everyone because that's what communities do, they come together. This is a tough thing for the school department. And it makes me very emotional, as you can tell, but we got good people, we got great programs, and we got great kids, and we're going to get through this. And I just applaud everyone coming together and working hard. Thank you. Thank you to everyone.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the committee? Aaron? Oh, okay. Anyone else? Okay, any questions or comments from the staff? Mr. Mizikar.
I just wanted to take the opportunity again to thank Dr. Sawyer, Mr. Collins, the entire school committee, most especially Ms. Fritz and Dr. McGee. We've worked a lot every week in meetings and trying to come up with the best plan that we can. And it's been a challenge, but I think it's provided us with an opportunity to open the books up further and not only see our way through these challenges, but also will make for an easier path forward once we see the light of the other side of the end of the tunnel and move beyond this and do more strategic planning for the town. So I thank them, thank the Board of Selectmen, and just hope that we get some better news in the fall and can put all this behind us. So just wanted to thank them.
Thank you, Mr. Mizikar. Any other questions or comments from the staff? Seeing none, any questions or comments from the public? And if you are in the public on the phone, just please yell out. Okay, seeing no comment. Again, I want to thank you guys for the presentation and all the hard work that you've done. Absolutely. And with that, we will now move on to Article VII. Mr. Mizikar.
All right, moving on to Article VII. I'm hoping my page is over. Article VII will now move through a series of articles that will develop the operating budgets for the town utilities. These are enterprise funds that are funded separately through rate payer revenues. The first in Article VII is our solid waste, also known as our Pay as You Throw program. And for this program, effective July 1, a rate increase went into place that brought us back to a more tenable 50-50 position between the use of the tax levy and the rates that are raised. It also, it actually preserved that position given the cost increases that we've experienced with the new contract that went into place last July. Never do I thought, never would I have thought that I'd rather be dealing with trash complaints, but I'd rather be dealing with trash complaints than what we've dealt with in this budget process. But regardless, this budget totals $2,328,503, and again, is funded roughly 50-50 from the tax levy and receipts for the sale of bags and bulkyway stickers.
Thank you, Mr. Mizikar. Any questions or comments from the committee members? Any questions, comments from the staff? Seeing none, any questions or comments from the public? Seeing none, we'll move on to Article VIII. Mr. Mizikar.
Thank you. This is the operating budget for the sewer services program. It provides our, for the treatment of our waste and also for the salaries of our staff that maintain the piping and infrastructure to get it to either the Westboro Treatment Plant or the newly under construction infrastructure that will take flow into the Upper Blackstone. The total budget for sewer operations is $6.3 million, with 5.1 of that really going to those treatment plant operations in partnership with the town of Westboro and the conglomerate of the Upper Blackstone Valley. And this is, all these funds again are generated through rate payer revenues.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the committee? And further questions or comments from the staff? Seeing none, any questions, comments from the public? Seeing none, we'll move on to Article 10. Mr. Mizikar.
For the water department, it totals $2,561,174 and provides for the staff and resources for the operation of our own water treatment plant. And it is again funded by the water rate charges that we issue to our customers.
Any questions, comments from the finance committee members? Seeing none, any questions, comments from the staff? Seeing none, any questions, comments from the public? Seeing none, we'll move on to Article 12. Mr. Mizikar.
Thank you. This is the final enterprise budget, which is for our newest enterprise, which is Stormwater Services. The total operating budget for Stormwater is $1,556,741. It's comprised of salaries for two staff members and covers the operating costs of all the federally mandated programs and infrastructure maintenance for our stormwater infrastructure. And it is raised through a separate stormwater fee.
Thank you, Mr. Mizikar. Any questions or comments from the finance committee? Mr. Adler.
Can you tell me the number again, the bottom line number, please?
Absolutely. Total operations, $1,456,741.
Okay, that's fine. I'm sorry, I misheard it. That's fine. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the committee? Seeing none, any further questions, comments from the staff? Seeing none, any questions, comments from the public? Seeing none, we will move on to Article 16.
Article 16 is an enterprise fund that funds the operations of Shrewsbury Media Connection. This $426,244 is received in from Selco as part of their franchise agreement with the Town of Shrewsbury Board of Selectmen, and it funds their entire operating budget for the year. It's basically transferred back out after it passes through the town books in compliance with state law.
Thank you, Mr. Mizikar. Any questions or comments from the committee? Seeing none, any questions, comments from the staff? Seeing none, any questions, comments from the public? Seeing none, we'll now move on to Article 22. Mr. Mizikar.
Thank you very much. This is an article that provides for funding to be received through an agreement with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts for revenues and to compensate the town for the cost of providing transportation to children that are in foster care that attend the Shrewsbury Public Schools. It's not a very large sum of money, several thousand dollars a year, but it's an opportunity that we have to enter into this agreement to receive this new revenue source. It's not a very large sum of money, several thousand dollars a year, uh, but it's an opportunity that we have to enter into this agreement to receive uh this new revenue source.
Thank you, Mr. Muzikar. Any questions or comments from the committee? Mr. Adler?
Uh, what's, I'm sorry, this is new. I am not familiar with this. Can you please introduce it to us?
Absolutely. Um, is Mr. Collins still on the call by any chance? If not, I can try to answer or I can go to the keeper. Okay. So um, this is uh an initiative that was established at the state level where uh the state provides reimbursement for any uh when I, when a foster, a child in foster care attends the Shrewsbury Public Schools, uh, we're uh required to obviously cover the transportation for that student. And uh, the Commonwealth offers a reimbursement if you enter into an MOA with them. And this simply authorizes uh the establishment of that memorandum of agreement. And then for the town to receive that reimbursement from the Commonwealth on an annual basis. Um, again, like I said, I think the estimate for fiscal year twenty would have been uh somewhere around three thousand dollars. So it's not a vast amount of money, but it would go uh directly to the school department for their use of educational services.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments from the finance committee? Seeing none, uh, any questions or comments from the staff? Seeing none, any questions, comments from the public? Seeing none, we will move on to Article uh Number Forty. Mr. Muzikar?
Um, Article Forty is traditionally Article One of the warrant, and it is to receive reports of town officers and committees, uh, which would be a requirement if a standing uh officer committee did not submit a written report for the annual town report. Um, currently, I'm unaware of any reports that are required to be uh given. Um, but there is no financial impact related to this um article, uh, regardless of our report is given or not.
So is this uh would we move to defeat or would we? I would, what were, I mean, I guess we can discuss when we get into it, but I'm a little curious about.
We can move to accept it, there's just nothing to accept. I don't see reason why we could just move to approve it.
We would also have, you could delay your recommendation. We'll certainly know by the morning of town meeting if you're gonna, we're hopefully post that. You can make a decision at that time.
All right. Any other questions or comments from the committee? Jordan? Jordan, do you have your hand up? Okay. Um, any questions or comment from the staff? Any questions or comment from the public? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to Article Forty One. Mr. Muzikar?
Um, Article Forty One is normally Article Two and it is the uh or one of the first articles, not necessarily Article Two. Um, it is the establishment, the annual requirement to establish and name the trustees of the Wright and Harlow Charitable Trust Fund. Those individuals uh who are interested and eligible are named within this uh motion. And the trust fund currently has uh a little less than five thousand dollars.
Any questions or comments by the finance committee? Any questions or comments by the staff? Any questions or comments uh from the public? Seeing none, we will now move on to the bylaw amendments. Um, Article Thirty One. Is that Mr. Cahill or Mr. Muzikar? Are you going to pick the lead?
Um, Article Thirty One, uh, we'll begin the conversation uh with Mr. Cahill.
Mr. Muzikar, did you want to do Twenty Nine first and then go to Thirty One, or did you want to go back to the bylaws?
I believe that we've already, we've already done Twenty Nine.
Yes. Yeah, Twenty Nine is the personnel bylaw.
I'm sorry, I apologize. I'm following the agenda and not the um proceedings.
So Article Thirty One is zoning bylaw uh with regards uh to establishing a new zoning districts, and I turn it over to Mr. Cahill through the chair.
Great, thank you, everyone. Um. It's a, thank you to the finance committee and thank you to everyone listening. I know you've had two very long nights. Um, so I am, and this is the end of the second night, so I'm going to be as brief as possible. Um, what I'm going to do tonight is I'm going to talk first about the, give you a very brief history about how we got to where we are today. I'm going to um explain to you what each of the articles um is doing in very general terms, and then I'm going to try to preemptively answer some questions that I know that are going to come up. So I am going to try to do a PowerPoint here, so um please bear with me. And I want to try to get it up and put it on full screen. So one second. Okay, can everyone see that? Has that gone full screen?
Uh, yes.
Okay, excellent, great. So I'm just going to go through, I don't have a lot of slides, I promise, I have about eleven slides, and I really appreciate everyone's patience with this. So um, just as I said, I'm going to give you a very brief history. So the proposal for a new town center zoning district um has its origins going all the way back to two thousand and sixteen with the Shrewsbury Master Plan. In the Shrewsbury Master Plan, uh, discussing the town center, the uh several goals were presented. And then also some very specific tasks were provided, and these tasks were given over to the planning department as tasks that needed to be done by them to improve the town center, right? And to maintain and enhance the character of Shrewsbury's historic town center, um, and to strengthen and preserve it. So a few of these, those were some of the larger general goals. The exact tasks were to conduct a design study, to determine the limits of the town center, and to make recommendations for parking, building design, streetscape improvements, and wayfinding. And finally, it was to consider developing a business association and/or an independent organization that promotes economic and cultural well-being in the town center. So I'm very happy to um let you know that the planning department successfully completed all of these tasks by either direct involvement or indirect involvement by aiding the creation of uh one of these items. So the first thing in two thousand and eighteen, the town was awarded a grant for the Shrewsbury Town Center Parking Management Plan. Um, this took a tally of the parking in the town center and provided some feedback from the consultant about how we could go about improving parking in the town center. In the same year in two thousand and eighteen, as many of you probably know, the uh establishment of the Shrewsbury Town Center Association was um undertaken and was successful. And as you know, this organization ran the Yule Tide Festival uh market last December very successfully in the lighting of the green. The Shrewsbury Town Center and Beal School Visioning Study wrapped up last June um and provided a report to the town. And the the planning department also played a role in helping the Beal Reuse Committee provide recommendations to the Board of Selectmen for reuse of the Beal School property. And finally, as some of you may also know, the wayfinding um study wrapped up about a month ago and was presenting to the Board of Selectmen. So the process after the culmination of all these different um tasks were complete, the town, uh, the, uh, excuse me, the planning board decided to move forward with uh what we thought was the next logical step, which was to move forward with a town center zoning district, an independent one, that would reflect many of the goals and these kind of um ideas that it came out of the visioning study and the data that came out of the parking study and so on. So in the fall of last year, I'm going to turn the page here. Uh, we drafted, the planning department drafted the initial zoning bylaws for the town center. Presented it to the selectmen who gave their blessing for us to move forward. In November and December of last year, we held two very well-attended public forums. And in January and February, we held meetings with stakeholders. So we used those meetings to solicit ideas and opinions from residents and the stakeholders, such as the Shrewsbury Town Center Association. And we had some really great feedback, and we were able to incorporate that feedback into our draft, our next round, which was drafting the actual, the solid language of those bylaws, if you will. And we presented those outcomes to the selectmen who again encouraged us to move forward. Now, as you all know, things don't always go according to plan, and we were supposed to be presenting this in April. Here we are in July, but that's okay. So we did do the draft and we based it on, as I said, the data, the visioning study, and the feedback from these public forums. So you're probably asking, why did you do four articles? Well, we found when we were doing these um public forums and asking for feedback from the public, we kept repeating in the same um organization, if you will, four different um topics, so elements to the zoning. We talked about new uses and definitions was one area that we discussed, and we kind of set this up a little bit as the forum, in the forum. Uh, the other one was, we talked about how a new town center would be incorporated into existing zoning, that became Article Thirty Two. We also found that we kept talking about, um, well, we're going to need a new center, a new subsection for the town center, which turned out to be Article Thirty Three, to create those criteria and standards and requirements. And I'm going to explain all this in one second too, to get more detail. And then finally, of course, we had to talk about the um the district, what would the district zoning boundaries be for the new town center? So given uh restrictions on time and the fact that we're doing this remotely and it's a little more difficult, and I want to respect everyone's evening here. Um, I, instead of slapping all the samples down on a slide, I decided to give you kind of the highlights, some of the samples of the new uses. So this is Article Thirty One, like, as I said, these are the new uses, and of course, with new uses come new definitions. So the first one uh I brought tonight, I thought I'd talk about is um vertical mixed use, which I know is very important to people. For those of you who don't know, vertical mixed use is when you have a more than single-story building, so you have multiple stories. Um, and we can get into dimensions, what's allowed, and how many stories are allowed in the town center later. Um, but for right now, for understand what a vertical mixed use is, is that if you have, say, two stories, as you can see in the picture here, the second story may not be the first uh be the same as the use on the first story. So you might have a retail on the first story, and you might have residential on the second story. You might have commercial on the second story and retail on the first story, or vice versa, or any type of mix. The whole idea is that it's mixed and it's in a vertical structure. And you can see here too, I put site plan and special permit. Well, we were trying to work through barriers and different um uh triggers, if you will, for oversight by the town and what kind of uh processes we wanted this to go through. So what we decided was to kind of use an existing structure as our starting off point, in this case, the Amity's Building, which has six residential units. So up to, we decided, what was reasonable was up to eight residential units would require a site plan only. Anything that's a vertical mixed use or horizontal mixed use, as it were, which is just as it sounds, it's not up and down mixed use, it's left to right, it's on a horizontal plane, um, would require a special permit um as well. So again, another level of um the town having an ability to condition these decisions and so on. So a little more local control over kind of larger projects. The next use was um by very popular demand at the public forums, as some people might imagine, were microbreweries and nanobreweries. So we found some industry standard definitions for these. Um, site plan again for the smaller one only, so nanobreweries um would have site plan approval only, be by site plan approval only, excuse me, and macro, uh, sorry, yeah, and microbreweries would be by site plan and special permit. So that's another use that we had, and we had to come up with a definition for it. And then finally, one of my pet peeves um is uh the boutique hotel idea, which is kind of a small scale hotel idea, which is no more than fifty rooms, which would be by site plan in the town center. These are very popular among small New England village town centers. Um, you can see them all throughout Brattleboro and um uh Northampton and the like, where you can see these kind of boutique hotels right smack in the center of their towns. Um, they're very attractive usually, and I think it's something um, and we had a lot of positive feedback at the public forum about it. So I think it's something the town would like to see, so we're certainly proposing it as a use. Now, I don't want to get into this too much, I just wanted to show you an example of, we also, of course, had to go through the use table schedule and make all these changes. So here you can see microbrewery and nanobrewery and the impact it had on the whole chart. So if you want to see these, and I I recommend any town meeting member who's watching or anyone else who'd like to look at these, we do have these on our websites, the entire articles and all the language you can see there. So Article Thirty Two, as I mentioned earlier, was all about incorporating um the new town center zoning into the existing zoning bylaws uh for criteria and things like site plans, review, signage, lighting, parking. So as you can see here, I put up just a few examples. Again, you can see it all online. Um, and a great idea is this, is so obviously the town center is going to have some very unique um criteria for it, unlike other uh zoning districts that is, so something that's very unique to them in terms of, say, signage, right? Our signage standards and our guidelines are going to be a little different in the town center than elsewhere. So you can see here, we had to put in language that said, "All other signage in the town center district shall be governed by the signage standards and guidelines in Section Seven U", which is, of course, the next article, Article Thirty Three, which would set up the new subsection. So in places where it doesn't match what we already have, it says, "Please to refer to the new section" um and things of that nature. Uh, on the right-hand side, again, you can see on the bottom right, any vertical or horizontal mixed use has been put under things that trigger site plan approval by the planning board. So this one's very procedural, Article Thirty Two. Um, it's substantive to a point, but for the most part, it's just trying to incorporate um what's going into the town center into what exists already today. And then we get to Article Thirty Three, which is kind of the crux of everything here. So Article Thirty Three would establish this new standalone town center subsection of the zoning bylaw. Um, and at the beginning of it, and you don't see it here because just for time and space, the subsection really begins by laying out the overall vision the town has for the town center, and you can read that vision as you go through the article. And the criteria the planning board is going to use when evaluating proposed developments. And I think that's very important, and I want to talk about that a little bit later, um, because I am going to mention the Beal thing at the very end. Um, and then this is followed by, so those kind of are the, what you see at the beginning. Um, it also has a dimensional section, which again, I just didn't have space to put this up. Um, and then this is followed by the specific standards and requirements that need to be met for development in the town zoning district. So that includes things like the dimensional standards, like I mentioned, for setbacks and lot coverage, but then also things for, as you can see here, building design and architecture, parking in pedestrian areas, lighting and signage and landscaping, right? Kind of the things that you think about when you think about what makes up a quintessential uh New England village town center, and what are we going to need for that? So as you can see here, actually, these images that you see here, these figures are actually pulled right out of the zoning bylaw, and I think it's important to understand that up until now, Shrewsbury zoning bylaw has had no images in it, really. I put in one, I think, two years ago at town meeting, and we really wanted this to be a a visual aid, not just to developers, but to the town, the board members, to town residents, so that really, if the language isn't getting through, then certainly people can see these concepts and understand them and really grasp them and understand what it is we're talking about when we're talking about things like combined parking, or what are we talking about when we're talking about um buffers along sidewalks. So we wanted to be very visual with this, because it is, it's a visual, exciting, and fun process to look forward to, and we just want to make sure that's out there. So then finally, we have the last article, Article Thirty Four, which is the proposed town center zoning district boundaries. So um while the new zoning district, if approved, would replace the limited business district, it would also be expanded as proposed slightly eastward to encompass those lots along Main Street that are already being used as commercial or mixed-use lots. So um you can see here, it's stretching slightly to the east from the pink area, which is the current limited business district. And as you can see, if uh most of those lots are actually, believe it or not, already being used for office spaces or some kind of mixed-use office residential. So we thought that was pretty much in line with the cultural, social, and economic um town center on the ground, as it were, and to bring this border around would already exist as perhaps the town center. So also, um, you can see the changes being made is the limited business district, currently as it exists, um, cuts through a lot of lots, it does not follow the lot lines. Um, what we're proposing here is that the new district would follow lot lines, makes it for a much cleaner uh zoning district. I wish we could do this for all the zoning districts, maybe one day we will, but for now, I think it makes it for a much more cohesive center area, and it clarifies a lot to landowners and potential purchasers of property and so on. Um, that you don't have to deal with that that zoning line coming right through your lot and figuring out what can I do with it. Um, so that brings us to the final section. And again, I'm trying to anticipate some questions here by answering them upfront, and I think one of the biggest questions I think we're going to have, um, because it's such a hot topic right now, is how exactly does the town center zoning impact development at the the Old Beal School site? There is, of course, currently an RFP being drafted, a request for proposal for those at home who do not know what an RFP is. Um, asking developers to um step forward with ideas for projects and developments. So the real question is, is how is it going to impact that? Well, it provides potential to developers with the communities. Um, sorry, it provides potential developers with the community's vision for the town center. As I said before, it really shows at the beginning of the um Article Thirty Three. It really lays out what the vision is for the town, what's the town imagining? So even just leaving aside exactly dimensions and setbacks and all that for a moment, we really want developers to come in and say, well, what does this town want? What are they going to accept from us? Right? And of course, the new zoning, I mean, we wanted to work together, and we worked um with the members of the Beal Reuse Committee and now the Beal RFP Committee to make sure what they were looking at and recommending to the selectmen that they matched up with what we were proposing as well for the town center. So also, the town center zoning, it would help establish the processes and criteria for development at the Beal site, all those things I talked about. What would trigger site plan approval, special permit approval, what kind of lighting requirements and standards would there be? So um, but I also wanted to mention, as you can see here, that zoning is never written in stone, and I think those of us who've been around long enough remember. And I think those of us who've been around long enough remember that Lakeway Commons and the New Market Basket Project, both of those, we had to tweak the zoning to make exactly what it was they were proposing fit. So if someone were to come forward with a great idea for the Beal school, or I guess, an idea that certainly a large majority thought was a great idea, and it didn't quite fit what we were asking for in zoning, we can always come back to town meeting and just tweak it enough to make it work for them and make it work for the town. So then another concern that we heard a lot, especially at the public forums, were would existing landowners have to make their buildings conform if the zoning passes? The short answer is no. It doesn't force anyone to tear down anything. You can, your use can continue. Dunkin' Donuts can continue, the gas stations can continue as is. There's no reason for them to come down. However, I think this is the real important part, is what it's providing. It's not so much a negative as what it's providing for the future and looking forward into the years and decades ahead about providing these future owners and our existing owners with new and creative, you know, opportunities and possibilities for developing their property if they want to, right? So I think that's key there, is if they want to. So it may not change right away, and that kind of leads into our third question is how quickly? And we got this, I was shocked, we got this question all the time, was not not so much a negative question, it was, and I have not heard this before at many meetings, so I was very impressed with it, was how quickly can we change the town center? How quickly can the town expect to see changes if the articles are approved at town meeting? And as I often have to explain, is that zoning isn't development, right? Zoning makes development possible within certain parameters. And again, it sets that vision up for everyone, but it doesn't make it happen. So this could take time. It could take years, hopefully not decades and decades. But in time, you would see the town center develop into that traditional New England town village center. And I believe that the culmination of four years of work, that the town and all of the staff that I've worked with in the town hall, that we really have a great product here, we have a really good outcome. And I'm proud of it, and I'd love to hear your feedback. And, but before we do that, I did just want to mention, if you want to view the complete text of these articles, you can go to the Shrewsbury Mass. Yeah, you can get this through the planning department or planning board webpage. You can get to the proposed town center rezoning page. You can also, anyone has, can always reach out to me. I'm usually available at my email address, or Emily Larson, our administrative assistant, or just give us a call. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cahill. I certainly want to applaud all the work that you've done on these four articles and the vision that you're putting forth for the town center. It's not very often that I go read through articles and actually start to get a little bit excited, so. And I agree with you, I do think the addition of the images and so forth really conveyed the vision along with the text. So I think that that's, it's a good step forward. One of the questions that I have is that I understand that as new development comes in, you know, that obviously that this would be the blueprint. But when you get to things like lighting and so forth, is that is that more of a town initiative? Or how would that, how would we start to see some of that lighting come into the center of town?
Right, so I spoke with Michael Hale, now recently retired, right before, not right before he left, I guess it probably was right before COVID hit, actually. He and I sat down and had a meeting about this. And there is a section of the by, the proposed bylaw that actually deals with, and I put this in, I worked with him on the language, he actually provided me the language, really, about working with Selco on this. So we have language in there. And I think, and I think as most people, or maybe I don't know most people, a lot of people know is Maple Street is actually Mass DOT, right? Controls most of Maple Street. So there's going to be a lot of cross-collaboration going on here, and we've tried to write it in such a way, you'll see it, actually, if you take a look at the language for sidewalks, I worked with Horsley Witten on this, because they've worked in other towns, too, where they have to do this cross-collaboration between private, two layers of public, right? Local and state. So we have the flexibility in there to work through it. So we have that goal, but then we have the language that the applicants shall work with the state as needed or with the town as needed to provide the infrastructure. So we have those lights, and I think we're going to have to probably do it by a case-by-case basis. I'm not sure, I think you're right on, and we have thought about it. But I think it's going to have to be maybe something we work out with Selco, exactly how it would work with the new lighting. A lot of the lighting we have, actually, is quite nice. We actually have some period lighting that works really well already, and I certainly don't want to see that go away, I don't think anyone does. I think where we're going to run into the more challenging aspects is going to be with the sidewalks and where do the right-of-ways end and the private, the land begins. So getting that eight-to-ten-foot sidewalks, we have a nice path with lots of trees and things of that nature. So I think I'm right there with you. But I do think that we allow for it in the zoning, and I think the contribution Michael made, I think, take a look at it, it is really good, and I think it kind of addresses what you were talking about.
Okay, thank you. Committee members, any questions on Articles thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four? Mr. Adler.
Yes, thank you, Bernie, I love this, this is fantastic. The years that the Town Center Committee's been working on. I know this is only one part of it, but you know, this is each part of this is so optimistic, and it shows a growth and a development and a plan, which you often don't see in a lot of towns, especially in their town centers, where there's a desire to remain static. And this shows a good foresight without having to let all control go away. I have a very small question about the map. There's this little zig down Summer Street, I guess that's behind the Catholic Church. What is that about?
The zig behind the, hold on a second, let me pull it up locally here.
It goes about five parcels down Summer Street. I don't know if that's because that's all really just the church property, or if it's something else. I'm hoping you can address that.
Summer Street, I am still looking, oh, 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 sorry, that church. I'm looking at the wrong church. Yes, so that is all owned by the church, those parcels?
Okay.
So I had some discussions with Kristen Lass about this, and I think, I forget who else we talked to, we talked to quite a few people about this. We thought it made sense that if we were going to include the church lot, you'd probably want to include all of the lots that the church owns. It would be unusual if the church sold off only a portion of their property. I mean, it could happen. But we thought already there is enough activity on those lots that it would make sense to include it. And certainly with the controls in the bylaw, I am not too concerned about anything coming in there that the board couldn't condition to make it reasonable for the neighbors in that area. It's probably not the most likely place that you're going to see the development, just because it's off the main street, and any new development likes that visibility. But that is the reason why.
Okay, thank you, that's all.
Any other questions or comments from the committee? Seeing none, any further questions or comments from the staff? Okay, seeing none, any questions or comments from the public?
This is Kristen Lass, if I could just make one comment. I'd really like to applaud the work of the planning department, including Mr. Cahill. This was an extremely thought-out, thorough process that brings true planning together. And he should be very proud of his work and our teamwork together related to bringing this so cohesively to the finance committee and to town meeting. And it has been, I know, a bit of a struggle to have to wait two, three, four months for this to come to town meeting, but it's a true effort, and would like to applaud him in that fashion.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the public?
Yes, I have a comment.
Oh, can you please identify, share your name and your address?
Yes, my name is Paul Schwab, I'm at thirty-eight Browning Road.
Okay, Paul, please, you have the floor.
Thank you. Mr. Cahill, I wanted to thank you for all the work that you've done on this and the planning board as well. You guys have done a tremendous job trying to vision this, and it's, obviously, a ton of work has gone into it. One thing, speaking as I'm also the chair of the Historical Commission, that I was hoping to see in this and appears not to be in there is provisions around historic preservation in the data that went out and the comments that we gave in the, some of the open forums back in the fall. That was one of the things that we heard come up quite a bit. We've already lost one significant historic home that's in this proposed district, the former Allen Funeral Home, the Thomas Ward House. I'm curious as to how this set of bylaw changes is going to incorporate historic preservation? If you could speak to that a little bit?
Yeah, absolutely. So this is something we struggled with, not in a bad way, in a good way. We thought about this a lot, and we actually met, as I said, we met with stakeholders back in January and February. We did meet with the Historic District Commission, and there was at one point some language towards historic preservation. I, from what I recall from that meeting in January, is that it was actually asked by the HTC to remove the language, because it was too broad-based and not specific enough. There was a lot of question around what is the definition of historic? How do you define it? And more importantly, how would the planning board define it, not being experts on historic buildings? So I would say that most of the uses, if not, not all of them, but a lot of the uses that you'll see that are being proposed would fall under a special permit requirement. And special permits can be denied by the planning board if there's a legitimate reason and a well-thought-out reason that the board gives for it. So if something constitutes a demolition of, you know, I don't know, let's just say the brand-new library, because that's never going to happen. So the brand-new library, someone were to say, "I want to buy that and I want to turn it into a giant hotel", that would be a special permit. The board would say, you know, we'd hear from the residents, and the board, hopefully, would respond to that and say, "No, no thanks." I think it's something that's going to go along with the the ongoing discussion that's been in town for a long time about historic preservation and the whole, I'm totally blanking on me, the actual phrasing of it, is the demo delay bylaw, demolition delay bylaw, which has been spoken about. And that's not so much at a zoning level, that's at a general town, general bylaw level. So I think, I think that really is why we pulled it from it. But I'm not too concerned also, because if you read through the bylaws, the bylaw very specifically states the preservation of the historic town center, the traditional nature of it, the traditional buildings, the traditional way you have the more denser development. So I think to tear down one of these buildings, the board's not going to look too favorably upon it unless there's a very good reason to do it. But you're right, we didn't have it in there, and it's, and like I said as well, this isn't in stone. And if there is something in the future we think we can add in a reasonable way and make it work, then it's certainly something the planning board and the planning department's going to consider. So I don't think it's over yet, and I think for that, it's just going to be another discussion to move forward with.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other questions or comments from the public? Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Cahill, for your presentation. We're now going to move on to Article thirty-five.
Yep, that's me, too. I'm going to throw it up for you, one second, should just take them. And it's not coming up. All right, hold on, this does it for sometimes. I will just, sometimes it doesn't show up when I want it to. It's not recognizing the file. Oh, now it is, all right, we're in luck. Okay. So this is Article thirty-five. So what this is doing, the current zoning at the moment, so as, let me give you a very brief background. Two years ago, the town, at Special Town Meeting, approved marijuana establishments in town and in various districts. So the different types of marijuana establishments were assigned, different districts were, zoning districts where they were allowed by special permit. Two of those, that, again, they're already allowed in two districts, are the Marijuana Cultivators and Craft Marijuana Cultivator Cooperatives, just because we need a really long name for their use, and the Office Research and Limited Office Research. What this would do is allow them to operate in the Limited Industrial District as well. And that's currently where independent testing laboratories and product manufacturers are also allowed. So I'm going to scroll down here to the map, if you can see that. So the limited, so right now where it's allowed is this upper, the pink area, you can see just northwest of the one forty-two ninety interchange, that parcel of land, and then down here on the bottom right, you can see that pink area is also where they'd be allowed, and this small purple area, they were allowed, these are where it's currently allowed. The blue areas you can see here, this is the Limited Industrial District. As you can see, it's mostly along the Route twenty industrial corridor. So it's a pretty heavily industrialized area. And the reason this is coming forward is because the Board of Selectmen, Town Manager's Office and the Planning Department's office continue to receive phone calls with interest in this area of town for a marijuana cultivator or cultivator cooperative. So in response to that, the Board of Selectmen asked the planning board to consider adding the district, the Limited Industrial District, as a zoning district where these two uses are allowed. And again, independent testing laboratories for marijuana and marijuana product manufacturers manufacturers are already allowed in this district as well. So this would mirror where those are already and provide a lot more land area, especially along Route twenty, and down here, Centec Park, this is Fortune Boulevard down there in the corner. And that's really it for this one, it's pretty straightforward what's being asked, I think. So any, oh, sorry, Madam Chair, go ahead, I'll let you ask if there's any questions.
That's okay. Any questions or comments from the board? Mr. Adler.
Thank you. Why are there a differential between the marijuana cultivator and craft marijuana cultivator cooperative? Why do we have to have two separate lines for that, please?
Yep, so that goes back a couple of years now, but that is actually definitions that the state was using when they were drafting template bylaws for towns, when they were providing templates to people. So that is found in towns across the state. That's just, so we just went with what the state was offering, really, at the time. I agree, I agree, I'm not disagreeing, but it's, sometimes it's easier to go along than to fight that, but maybe that's something we can change in the future and lump them all together.
I don't think that's really worth a lot of time. Unless, it seemed weird, but, you know, everything has a reason, fine.
I'm sorry, can you define what's the difference between the two?
Yes, the marijuana cultivate, well, so essentially, the difference is, and I don't have the definitions in front of me, but the difference is, is the Craft Marijuana Cultivator Cooperative has regulations around being a, essentially a small local business, is how they control it, where the marijuana cultivator, without the craft cooperative part, can be a large, you know, not multinational firm, but national company. So that's how they differentiate them. One is a small business in town with locals running it, and the other one could be, I'm trying to think of some of the big players, but it's not coming to me, like the one, oh, who's ever opening up on Route nine right now? Like, that's a national company that's running that store. And the other one's a small business.
Okay, and these cultivators, are these where they're completely growing?
I wouldn't expose you to it.
Yep, hold on, I can pull up the definition. So, right, so a Craft Marijuana Cultivator Cooperative is comprised of residents of the Commonwealth as a limited liability company or limited liability partnership under the laws of the Commonwealth or an appropriate business structure as determined by the commission. That would be the Cannabis Control Commission. And that is licensed to cultivate, obtain, manufacture, et cetera, et cetera, brand marijuana and marijuana products, or deliver it to consumers. So that's the Craft Marijuana Cultivator. Marijuana cultivator is just an entity licensed to cultivate, process and package marijuana, to deliver marijuana to establishments, transfer it to other establishments, but not to consumers. So that's your difference.
Excuse me, Judy, this is Hannah.
Hi, Hannah.
Could I just chime in for a second?
Certainly.
The primary difference is that the marijuana cultivators is, would be one entity, one business. The craft cultivators are many smaller entities together in one operating structure.
Okay, thank you. So you're basically saying that a craft cultivator inside a structure inside a structure would be individual entities as opposed to the?
They, they have come together. So basically, the, the goal was to be able to allow smaller players to be able to get entrance into this market space, so they can join essentially a cooperative or together and be working as opposed to a larger well, more well-financed entity who could do this on their own.
Oh, okay, thank you. Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you, Hannah.
Any other questions or comments from committee members? Any further questions, comments from staff? Any questions or comments from the public? Okay, thank you, Mr. Cahill. We're now going to move on to Article 30.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Judy, what article are we moving on to?
We're moving on to Article 37.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
I can take this article.
Thank you.
So Article 37 seeks to adopt Mass General Law, Chapter 148, Section 26H, which requires sprinklers in boarding houses. The town of Shrewsbury is one of the very few municipalities in the town, in the Commonwealth who has not adopted this state regulation. In the Building Inspector's research, it appears that this was a local adoption law put in place as far back as 1989. And the town may have decided not to adopt it at that time because lodging and boarding houses were not in allowed use. We do have those uses in the bylaw at this time, and we have recognized that there are some uses within the community. Therefore, the Building Inspector and the Fire Chief have brought this to our attention, that it's in the best interest of the town to have this requirement in place. And this law would apply to existing lodges, lodging houses and boarding houses that, and requires a sprinkler system to be installed within five years of adoption of the law. Currently, the building code is now more restrictive and does require sprinkler systems if a new use of this type were to be established.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the committee?
Judy, this is Hannah. I have one question, please.
Please.
Kristen, can you just remind me what's the definition of a boarding house?
Let me pull up the bylaw. So a boarding or rooming house, a building or premise other than a hotel in motel, tourist court, or lodging house where rooms are let and where meals may be regularly served by pre-arrangement for compensation, not open to transient guests, in contradiction to hotels, restaurants, and tourist homes open to transients. And then, go ahead.
How many do we have in town?
I would have to get you that number. I do not have that off the top of my head. And then lodging houses is a building or portion thereof situated on a single lot containing five or fewer rooms provided for the temporary occupancy of paying guests who are lodged with or without meals, and in which cooking facilities may be provided, an essential kitchen for them.
So if we adopt this bylaw now, does it, does it sit there until something triggers it, like, or is it have to be? Do they need to add sprinklers now if they're operating as a boarding house and lodging?
They would have five years to comply.
Okay, so it wouldn't matter, though, it, it has nothing to do with, usually a lot of these things are triggered by if you're doing major renovation work, you know, something. This is a time-to-find, you must do it within five years, regardless of doing anything else?
That is correct.
Okay. Thanks.
Are boarding houses, do they have to be registered with the town?
We do not require registration at this time, no.
So technically, we're not aware if someone is operating in as a boarding house, then?
Not unless it's brought to our attention if someone comes in for additional permitting or a property sells or something like that.
Okay.
But if this were adopted, we'd certainly put out appropriate messaging. And, and whether people read that or not is, is yet to be seen.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from the Finance Committee?
Sorry, Judy, can I have a follow-up?
Absolutely.
So just to that point, if we don't know in town, like, if we have these, will this impact, let's say that somebody who, who is structured like one and they go to sell it, but they're not aware of this, if they within any time now in the next five years goes to sell this, will they be required to make that investment before it's sold?
I don't know to my knowledge if they're required to, to make that investment before it's sold. I think it's within five years of the adoption of the bylaw is how I'm reading it.
Okay, so I think it's, it'd probably just be important that we make sure in a transaction, though, that the, any potential seller or buyer, in addition to getting out there to people who this is going to impact, you know, if somebody was looking at buying it, I think making sure they're aware of this additional responsibility, because it would certainly weigh into, I think, the negotiation of cost of a sale.
Sure.
I think Hannah brings up a good point, but did you not say that we're one of the few towns that do not have this requirement?
We're one of the few towns who have not adopted this provision of Mass General Law.
Okay, so when you say one of few, like, how many?
I will get that information from the Building Inspector's Office. She's probably more familiar with that than I am.
Right. Because I do think that if it's, if you're talking, like, if we're in the vast, vast minority, then if someone was purchasing sort of a boarding house and the vast majority had, of places have this requirement, then it would be less of a surprise. I'm not taking away anything that Hannah mentioned, but I do think that if it is fairly commonplace, then it shouldn't necessarily catch people by surprise. Any other comments or questions by the committee? Mr. Adler?
Yes, hi. I'm concerned about the, that we haven't done this in the past, and I'm glad that we're doing it now. You know, boarding houses, really lodging, it's those small buildings, homes, whatever you want to call it, with guests, that's the stuff that concerns me. And putting sprinklers in there seems kind of a no-brainer. And it's, it's kind of, I know it's a difficult project to undertake. I know it's an expensive project to undertake, but it's a necessary project for the safety of, of the guests. So I, I, you know, I'm glad we're finally catching up. Thank you.
Mr. Garcia?
Yeah, just, what are the penalties for not installing the sprinkler system within the five years?
It would be an order from the Building Inspector's Office to remedy the situation, and then if that's not taken care of, you have to escalate it up, and it would go to Housing Court from that point forward.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the committee? Any other questions or comments from staff? Any questions or comments from the public? Okay, seeing none, I, I believe, Mr. Mizakar, if I'm not mistaken, that completes our review of the articles. Do you agree with that? That there aren't any questions to discuss?
I certainly agree.
Okay, then may I get a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
May I get a second?
Second.
Okay, so now we will do a roll call. Mark Adler?
Aye.
Vikram Chawla?
Present.
Aaron Howard? Oh, Aaron, did you say aye? Oh, okay, Hannah Kane?
Aye.
Mark Murray?
Aye.
Jordan Rubin?
Aye.
Carlos Garcia?
Aye.
Judy Vetter, aye. This now closes the public hearing. Okay, so now we are going to move on to the deliberation in action. We're going to move on to the deliberation discussion of the articles, and then we'll vote on them. So, Mr. Mizakar, you said at the top of the meeting that we could do these in groups. What is a logical grouping? I mean, can we do Articles 1 through 10, or?
I, I, I mean, my recommendation to the committee is that, I mean, you could go as broad as everyone wants to recommend the whole warrant. I think that's a little bold. I can, you know, tell you that certainly Articles, well, I mean, we grouped them together in different classifications in your two agendas. With the, you know, the first grouping being related to non-operating financial articles. So I don't know if you want to try that approach. I don't, I'm not sure of the best way.
All right, well, let's try that. So last night, we looked at Articles 1, 3, 4, 5, 6, 15, 18, 19, 20, and 21. They're all non-operational budget articles. If, if the committee members can take a few minutes, so that, if you have access to last night's agenda, so that would be 4A, again, that's Article 1, 3, 4, 5, 6, 15, 18, 19, 20, and 21.
Judy?
Yes.
I will make a motion if you would like me to, at this point.
Okay.
I move that we recommend approval of Articles 1, 3, 4, 5, 6, 15, 18, 19, 20, and 21.
Can I get a second on that?
Second.
Do we, either, is there any discussion on any of these articles? And are there any of these articles that we wanted, that we were going to actually wanted to defeat?
That's a very good point. Kevin, was there? We did do, there were a couple at the beginning, I think we're like that.
Yeah, Article 1 is one of them. That's a great point. Sorry, I led you astray.
Judy, you got that. Okay, I will amend my motion. That, is it just Article 1, Kevin? Sorry.
What about 21?
I led you astray. Yeah, and 21.
So 1 and 21. I'm going to amend my motion, just take those two out of it. My motion is now to, I move that we recommend approval of Articles 3, 4, 5, 6, 15, 18, 19, and 20. Did you get those? Kristen, you're recording this, right? Did you get those? Okay. I move approval, that we recommend approval of those.
Second.
Second.
Okay. Discussion of Articles 3, 4, 5, 15, 18, 19, or 20? Seeing none, we'll take a roll call on, my papers are all messed up. Where's my roll call? Here it is. Sorry, too many papers go in here. All right, so now we'll do a roll call. So this is a roll call in favor of approval of these articles. Mark Adler?
Aye.
Vikram Chawla?
Aye.
Aaron Howard?
Aye.
Hannah Kane?
Aye.
Mark Murray?
Aye.
Jordan Rubin?
Aye.
Carlos Garcia?
Aye.
Judy Vetter, aye. So those articles are recommended by the Finance Committee.
Judy?
Yes.
Kevin, were there any other articles other than 1 and 21 that we were going to recommend defeat? I believe there was one we took today, wasn't there?
There was, yes.
Why don't we loop those together just for fun? I know there'll be others that may be controversial, but there were the ones that were not controversial.
You're referring to 40, but it wasn't to defeat, it was to not take any action on it.
Right. Oh, that's it, yes, thank you. That was Hannah, thank you. Okay, then I will move that we, if that's all right with you, Judy, I will move that we recommend a defeat of Articles 1 and 21.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion to defeat Articles 1 and 21. Take a roll call. Mark Adler?
That is, just so I understand, it's a motion to recommend defeat. We aren't actually approving or disapproving. We just recommend or don't.
Right.
Aye.
Defeat.
I think it's a motion to not recommend.
We have to make a recommendation. If we don't make a recommendation, if we move that we don't make a recommendation, then we aren't doing what we have to do, which is recommend something. We either recommend approval, or we recommend the town meeting say yes, or we recommend the town meeting say no, or we have to make a recommendation.
We actually make recommendations or we don't make recommendations. I think the lang, isn't the language in the book Finance Committee recommends or Finance Committee does not recommend?
That's correct.
Okay, then I would be saying the Finance Committee does not recommend approval of this article. Or we have to, we have to have some action. So, but that, and that's fine. That, that's fine, Hannah.
Okay, so the motion is, and what we're voting on is for the Finance Committee to not recommend Articles 1 and 21. Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you. Mark Adler?
Aye.
Vikram Chawla?
Aye.
Aaron Howard?
Aye.
Hannah Kane?
Aye.
Mark Murray?
Aye.
Jordan Rubin?
Aye.
Carlos Garcia? Judy Vetter, aye. Okay, so that then takes us down to Articles, these were the capital improvements in utility capital improvement plans for fiscal year 2021 is Article 9, 11, 13, and 14.
Judy?
Mr. Adler?
I move that we recommend approval of Articles 9, 11, 13, and 14.
A second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve Articles 9, 11, 13, and 14. We're now going to take a roll call vote. Mark Adler?
Aye.
Vikram Chawla?
Aye.
Aaron Howard?
Aye.
Hannah Kane?
Aye.
Mark Murray?
Aye.
Jordan Rubin?
Aye.
Carlos Garcia's?
Aye.
Judy Vetter, aye. It's 9, 11, 13, and 14. Okay, so now we're going to move on to the Land Disposal and Acquisitions, which is Articles 23 through 28. So that's 23, 24, 25, 26, 27, and 28.
Judy?
Mr. Adler?
I move that we approve, I move that we recommend approval of Articles 23, 24, 25, 26, 27, and 28.
Second.
Is there any? Mr. Garcia?
I'm sorry. Is Article 27 another one that we are recommending, or not recommending, rather? I'm looking at it.
Which is that, Carlos? 27? Yes, it is. That is the one.
Not to recommend, yep.
Yep. I'm going to back off my motion and just restate it for clarity's sake. It was that move that we recommend approval of Articles 23, 24, 25, 26, and 28.
Is there a second?
Second, second, second.
Okay, all right, so now we have a motion and a second to recommend approval of 23, 24, 25, 26, and 28. We're gonna take a roll call vote. Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Vikum Chabra?
Aye.
Aaron Howard?
Aye.
Hannah Kane?
Aye.
Mark Murray?
Aye.
Jordan Rubin?
Aye.
Carlo Garcia?
Aye.
Judy Vetter? Aye. Mr. Adler? Thank you.
Hannah, would you like to do 27?
Mr. Adler, can you make a motion, please?
Okay, I, I move that we not recommend Article 27.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. We now have a motion and a second to not recommend Article 27. We will now take a roll call vote. Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mr. Chabra?
Aye.
Ms. Howard?
Aye.
Ms. Kane?
Aye.
Mr. Murray?
Aye.
Mr. Rubin?
Aye.
Mr. Garcia?
Aye.
Ms. Vetter? Aye. The Finance Committee does not recommend Article 27. Okay, so now we are moving on to Articles Funding for Outside Entities. This is Articles 17 and 39.
Judy?
Mr. Adler?
I move that the Finance Committee recommend approval of Articles 17 and 39.
I second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve Articles 17 and 39. Is there any discussion on these? Seeing none, we can move to a roll call vote. Mark Adler?
Aye.
Vikum Chabra?
Aye.
Aaron Howard?
Aye.
Hannah Kane?
Aye.
Mark Murray?
Aye.
Jordan Rubin?
Aye.
Carlos Garcia?
Aye.
Judy Vetter? Aye. Okay, thank you. So that takes care of the Articles that we discussed last night. We're now gonna move on to the Articles that we discussed this evening. So we have just trying to think here. Let me move on to so yeah, let's take Article 29. This is the Personnel Bylaw.
29, 29. Where, I'm sorry, where are you?
Article 29, which is the Personnel Bylaw.
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you. Can I get a second on that?
Second.
Is there any discussion on Article 29? I see none then. We have a motion and a second to approve Article 29. I'll now take a roll call vote. Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Vikum Chabra?
Aye.
Aaron Howard?
Aye.
Hannah Kane?
Aye.
Mark Murray?
Aye.
Jordan Rubin?
Aye.
Carlos Garcia?
Aye.
Judy Vetter? Aye. Finance Committee recommends Article 29. So Article let's see.
Judy, I make a motion to approve Articles 26, 28, and 30?
I think we should take 37.
Okay.
So 36 and 38, is that what you?
You're right, I didn't, I mean 26 and 28.
You mean 36 and 38?
Sure.
Thank you.
No.
No?
Aren't we?
Hannah, are you just going off the agenda for today? Where are you going?
No, I thought, it's fine. Whichever two you just said, Judy, 36 and 28.
Finish the bylaw amendments, can we do those?
I thought you were going in the order of today.
Well, I was going in the order that we took things this evening. Hannah, so, yeah.
That's what I thought.
I don't have those in front of me. The problem is I can't recite them if I can't see them. I'm just going off the printed agenda.
Okay, so Article, okay, so let me just do this then. Let's just do, Article 36 was was that, that's Mr. Donahue's presentation, is that correct?
That's correct.
So let's take that, let's take the, let's take these separately, okay? So let's take Article 36 on, this is, yes.
I move that we approve, I move that we recommend approval of Article 36.
Okay, can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, I just want to remind everyone that we are voting on Article 36, which is the article that Mr. Donahue presented. Is there any discussion on Article 36? Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve Article 36. We can take a roll call vote. Mark Adler?
Aye.
Vikum Chabra?
Aye.
Aaron Howard?
Aye.
Hannah Kane?
Aye.
Mark Murray?
Aye.
Jordan Rubin?
Aye.
Carlos Garcia?
I'm going to recuse myself from this one?
That's correct, thank you.
And I apologize for my earlier question, I am still adjusting for the new role.
It's okay. Judy Vetter? Aye. The, so Article 36 is approved and recommended, or recommended by the Finance Committee. So that's, will take us to Article 38, which is Article 38 is the donation bins. Okay? Article 38 is related to the donation bins. Can I get a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion related to Article 38? Mr. Adler?
I'll be brief. I don't like this article much. I agree that the bins are a terrible eyesore, but it doesn't seem like it's something that either the town needs to regulate or that the regulations are actually going to help. It seems to me like what we've got here is, it's like someone's dumpster behind their lot is not being taken care of well, then that should be taken care of in that way. But it's about private parties acting in a private way on their private land. So I don't want to beat this one to death, and I don't think I'm gonna be in the majority on it, but I am gonna dissent on the vote.
Okay, any further comments on, or discussion on Article 38?
I, I think I would just clarify that I don't think it came out of a concern about somebody's dumpster in their business setting. I think it is more, I know there's one on Route 9 just past Hooters that a lot of people have commented about, the donation bins, where people just drop off anything that they want to drop off, and it overflows and is an eyesore. I think that's what prompted this. I don't, by law, to be generated.
If I may, I, I agree. I think that's exactly the case that generated. I drive by that all the time, and it's awful and it's ugly. But again, there are plenty of things in the world that are visually awful and visually ugly, but they aren't an actual problem that needs to be regulated. It's just, you know, like, I don't like the color of your house. I don't like you leaving your car on, you know, on, you know, without the tires on. It's just a visual thing, and it shouldn't be something I feel like you should either be getting involved with, or getting involved is really gonna help.
Could I just ask? Go ahead, sorry, Ms. Feller.
Certainly, go ahead.
I just, could I ask a clarifying question to the town manager then? My, the way that I read this, it's the donation collection bin, is it not? Was the issue not so much that we don't have anything by which we can hold people accountable who have placed these donation bins on property?
That's correct. Under the current situation, anyone could place that bin, a bin tomorrow. You know, some limitations, but they don't have to notify the town. They don't, we don't have any way to incentivize them to clean it up.
Aaron?
I mean, I think the, the problem is that, you know, the one that stop and chop is another one, that people, the bins get full and people start leaving stuff outside them, and they, the property owner and the owner of the bins in some cases, don't do anything about it, don't clean it, don't clean it up. And it seems perfectly reasonable for me. I mean, we have plenty, we have rules about residential eyesores and everything. It seems perfectly reasonable that we should legislate that you can't just let junk lay around for weeks or outside your bin that you're getting paid for. I mean, the people are making money for having it there typically.
I would agree with that completely. Another bin that is an eyesore is the one that's down here on Route 20. And, you know, it can, it accumulates all kinds of stuff. So I agree that we have, we've put through a nuisance bylaw. I think that this is in keeping with that. Any other questions or discussion on Article 38? Okay, so we have a motion to approve and a second. I am now gonna take a roll call vote to recommend Article 38. Mark Adler?
Aye.
Vikum Chabra?
Aye.
Aaron Howard?
Aye.
Hannah Kane?
Aye.
Mark Murray?
Aye.
Jordan Rubin?
Aye.
Carlos Garcia?
Aye.
Judy Vetter? Aye. So that's, what is that? Seven to one. The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article 38 by a seven to one vote. Thank you. This now takes us to Article 30.
I would make sorry, go ahead, Ms. Feller.
This was the article that was presented by Mr. Molina?
Judy?
Mr. Adler?
I move that we recommend approval of Article 30, the petition.
Second.
We have, so is there any discussion on Article 30?
Ms. Vetter, could I make a comment?
Certainly.
I would just like to voice my agreement for Mr. Mizikar's comments that he made. For me, it's not a philosophical question. I've long supported this at the legislative level. I, I think it's a question of timing, and I think our role as FinCom, while some people may view this as allowing it to go forward to be put on a ballot, the way it will get represented is that FinCom supports this article. And I think that there's a real responsibility for us to provide the financial direction and impact. So for me, this Finance Committee, in the six years I've been on it, have been, has been continuously talking about the need to prioritize a new police station. And so I think that, for that reason, I feel a responsibility to speak clearly to people, that I think that is the priority for the community. And certainly, I would support this at a different period of time if there wasn't something else, but I feel the need to be very clear about where we are at in November, in the questions that we're going to be asking. I think it's also in light of the situation of the pandemic and the economic strife. You know, we have double digits unemployment, and we're probably not coming out of that in the next couple of months. So from my perspective, it is not a question of worthiness, it's a question of timing. And so for that reason, I'm going to be voting not to recommend.
I'd like to, to say that I, I hear the comments, but at the same time, I feel that the voters should have an opportunity to decide what they think the priority is. Now, what I might do as an individual at the voting, voting box may be something different, but one of the things that, you know, that I have found frustrating sometimes is that, you know, years and years ago, there was a group of us that wanted to have an operational override because we weren't happy with the cuts that were being made to the school, but yet an operational override wasn't put on the ballot. Whether it would have passed or not, we were denied the opportunity to vote for that. I, I do hear what you're saying, Hannah, because the wording in the warrant will be that the Finance Committee recommends. But there are votes where the Finance Committee has said that it recommended something because the philosophy behind it was that they wanted to give the voters the opportunity to decide basically where they want to put their money. So although I certainly respect your opinion and that of Mr. Mizikar's, I actually will be supporting this article. Is there any other question, discussion on this article? Ms., Aaron Howard?
I, no, I certainly respect Mrs. Kane, Mr. Mizikar's opinion. I just, I don't agree that approving this would be saying that the police station is not a priority. That, you know, I certainly fully support the the need for a new police station. You know, I think the voters have always been, have a history of strong support for new capital projects, and it, you know, remains to be seen what they think about this, and whether they will want to pass this as well or put it, or put it off till another time. But, you know, I trust them to make that judgment, and I think that this, you know, I will be supporting it.
Ms. Vetter, I'm sorry, can I make one more comment, please?
Absolutely.
I just want to note that actually the voters in choose a rate don't have a long history of supporting capital projects. They have a long history of not voting them in on the first time. It wasn't until we did the Sherwood Middle School that we got a vote on a first time for that capital type of project. And the reason that we got it is we had a very clear message of consistency across all boards and presented it as a financial investment, which I also believe is how we need to talk about the police station building. But I think that, you know, for me, I worry that when you put two things out there at the same time, it was going to not give clarity in terms of importance. And so that is my concern. Again, it's not diminishing what CPA, the value it can bring to a community. It is that I think our community deserves a lack of clarity in terms of importance when we're asking people to use their, their property tax dollars. So, thank you.
I stand corrected. The other defeats must have been before my time, except for the library, which I knew about.
Any other discussion from the committee? Okay, so we have a motion and a second for the Finance Committee recommend Article 30. We are now gonna take a roll call vote. Mark Adler?
Aye.
Vikum Chabra?
Aye.
Aaron Howard?
Aye.
Hannah Kane?
No.
Mark Murray?
Aye.
Jordan Rubin?
No.
Carlos Garcia?
Aye.
Judy Vetter? Aye. So I believe that that vote was, we got one.
Six to two?
Six, thank you. So six to two, so the Finance Committee recommends approval of Article 30. And now moves us on to the operating budgets for the financial town and school. So, Mr. Mizikar, is there any reason why we can't take 2, 7, 8, 10, 12, and 16 as a group? Mr. Adler?
I move that we recommend approval of Articles 2, 7, 8, 10, 12, and 16.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion on Articles 2, 7, 8, 10, 12, and 16? Okay, no discussion. So what we are now, again, we are voting on the Finance Committee recommending Articles 2, 7, 8, 10, 12, and 16. recommending Articles two, seven, eight, ten, twelve, and sixteen. Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Vikram Chawla?
Aye.
Aaron Howard?
Aye.
Hannah Kane?
Aye.
Mark Murray?
Aye.
Jordan Rubin?
Aye.
Carlos Garcia?
Aye.
Judy Vetter, aye. That now takes us to miscellaneous twenty-two, forty, and forty-one, so.
Uh, may I? Kevin, you, we were concerned about the reports that were, I think we can still approve this article with the understanding that we will accept whatever reports come forward and if there are none, we don't need to move to disapprove that. We're just approving whatever reports come forward. I think that would not be ambiguous. Is that okay?
I don't have any concerns with that.
Okay. All right.
Then I move approval, uh, move that we recommend approval of Articles twenty-two, forty, and forty-one.
One. Can we get a second?
Second.
Any discussion on Articles twenty-two, forty, and forty-one? Okay, we have a, a motion to approve and second. We are now going to take a roll call to recommend approval of Articles twenty-two, forty, and forty-one. Mark Adler?
Aye.
Vikram Chawla?
Aye.
Aaron Howard?
Aye.
Hannah Kane?
Aye.
Mark Murray?
Aye.
Jordan Rubin?
Aye.
Carlos Garcia?
Aye.
Judy Vetter, aye. The Finance Committee is recommend proving, recommending approval of Articles twenty-two, forty, and forty-one. So that now takes us down to, um, the bylaw amendments. Um, may I suggest that we consider Articles thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three, and thirty-four? Together? That were, these are the articles that were presented by Mr. Cahill?
Sure, that's fine, if I may make a motion?
Please.
I move that we recommend approval of Articles thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three, and thirty-four.
Second.
Okay, we have, uh, a motion to approve and second, is there any discussion on these articles? Okay. So we are going to take a vote for the Finance Committee to recommend approval of Articles thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three, and thirty-four. Mark Adler?
Aye.
Vikram Chawla?
Aye.
Aaron Howard?
Aye.
Hannah Kane?
Aye.
Mark Murray?
Aye.
Jordan Rubin?
Aye.
Carlos Garcia?
Aye.
Judy Vetter, aye. The Finance Committee recommends approval of Articles thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three, and thirty-four. So let's do these last two individually. Um, Article thirty-five is related to the marijuana cultivation. Mr. Adler?
Um, well, if, I'm sorry, after that, what's left?
Then there's the boarding house one with the sprinklers. So I thought we should take those two separately.
Sure, okay, Article thirty-five. I move that we recommend, uh, approval of Article thirty-five.
Can I get a second, please?
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Um, is there any discussion on Article thirty-five? Okay, excellent. We are now going to, um, take a vote for the Finance Committee to recommend Article thirty-five. Mark Adler?
Aye.
Vikram Chawla?
Aye.
Aaron Howard?
Aye.
Hannah Kane?
Aye.
Mark Murray?
Aye.
Jordan Rubin?
Aye.
Carlos Garcia?
Aye.
Judy Vetter, aye. The Finance Committee recommends Article thirty-five for approval. So now this takes us to Article thirty-seven, um, which is again, to remind everybody that this is the sprinklers in the boarding house. Mr. Adler?
I move that we recommend approval of Article thirty-seven.
May I have a second?
Second.
Excellent, thank you. Any discussion on Article thirty-seven? Okay, no discussion. So now we're going to move to the vote for the recommend, for the Finance Committee to recommend approval of Article thirty-seven. Mark Adler?
Aye.
Vikram Chawla?
Aye.
Aaron Howard?
Aye.
Hannah Kane?
Aye.
Mark Murray?
Aye.
Jordan Rubin?
Aye.
Carlos Garcia?
Aye.
Judy Vetter, aye. The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article thirty-seven. And if, I think that, that, that is all the articles, just so everybody concur with that? All right, so now we are going to move into review and, and approval of the draft Finance Committee report. Is that something that we can do this evening? Cause we were planning on updating that based on the information gathered here. Um, I don't know, Mr. Mizikar, um, what are your thoughts on? I feel like the report is not ready. Or what do you?
Well, I mean, there, there is, um, a couple of challenges that we have. So we have updated all the numbers, um, within the document. And, you know, kind of as Mr. Segalnik had it drafted, um, he identified, he provided the document earlier this week and, um, those numbers were updated by Mr. Snowden. There's some content in there, um, that may need tweaking. I was wondering if perhaps the committee would be, um, willing to allow one of their members, um, along with Mr. Segalnik, if he's, you know, able to, to kind of finalize the report. The challenge is, um, we have to go to print tomorrow, um, by like ten AM for the full book. So, um,
Oh, I, I thought.
It's really a timing issue, I don't know if.
I thought, I thought we had discussed that we hadn't till like the beginning of next week originally, but that's not the case.
It is not, uh, we're mailing out on Wednesday, uh, the book.
Okay, um.
They, I don't know if Mr. Snowden has any further comments as far as the, the final or the current condition of the report, so, um.
Thank you, Mr. Mizikar. Um, as you said, most, the report in its current form has the numbers that would be reflected in the warrant for the budget or, and fiscal projection too. A lot of it is more narrative based and some language was added, um, pertaining to the current pandemic. It is more narrative, honestly. And usually the conclusion is an area where the committee wants to make sure that their, their voice is accurately, uh, under, heard, I guess. To reiterate though, um, it will need to go to print first thing in the morning in order to have it turned around for us so we can mail it out.
Is there anyone that, um, so when you say it's, has to be mailed out, so we need to review this tonight as a group? Is this where we are or is this, or is there someone that can make final edits tomorrow morning? Um, I, I originally thought that, uh, we're going to have over the weekend, so I was planning on trying to work with John, but I'm not going to be able to work on it tomorrow morning. I, I have to work.
That needs to be done at this point. I'm, I'm a little, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm still, I, you know, I, I've worked on it in the past. I didn't work on it this year. This year it was Patrick worked with John. So I'm not really as.
Can I make? Is it possible that instead of having it actually be part of the book, that it could be a, a document that gets mailed in the package to town meeting members? Like, instead of having it wrapped inside the town meeting, wouldn't that give a little bit more time to finish the letter?
Yes, uh, we, that would be an opportunity for us to print it in-house and it would, just wouldn't be bound in the book.
I mean, we get lots of things that aren't bound in the book from time to time. I know it's not ideal, but I'm just trying to throw out a suggestion given the timing issue.
I'm, I'm, I'm happy to facilitate that and make sure we get it printed and included. I think that's probably the best suggestion. Uh, we would just need the committee to kind of, um, identify who, you know, who's going to work with us on it and we'll be diligent in that on Monday and Tuesday or, you know, excuse me, Friday and Monday. So, uh, we can get it printed on Tuesday and then assembled and out the door on Wednesday.
Is there someone that, um, has the time to work on this?
We could, you know, we can certainly do the, you know, we don't want to put words in the committee's mouth. That's, that's our, that's our challenge as staff, but we can get folks up to speed.
Yeah.
Are John not involved anymore?
Uh, he was unable to join because he had, had a medical procedure, uh, yesterday. So I just don't, we, I just don't know, um.
It's just that he and Patrick worked on it.
That is, the issue is that, um, he and Patrick worked on it. So we're sort of picking stuff up mid-love, mid-level. I mean.
Mrs. Vetter, may I speak?
Certainly.
David, um, and I had discussed with Mr. Segalnik, I'm not going to put words in his mouth, and I think he is intending on still trying to review it. Um, the document that was shared should have some colored text and the colored text, the red text are areas that would be the new language that John was hoping to review. The text that's in black, um, has been the, the work that the committee has either seen before or that Patrick and John felt was concise and to the point. Um, if that helps your review, um, use that as you need it.
All right, well, to move things along, um, I guess I'll touch, try and touch base with John tomorrow and then, um, over the weekend, then I guess I will, hopefully John can, can pick this up and he and I can get the final wording. But I think, you know, we wanted to fold in some of the information that we received from the school committee and from, um, Mr. Mizikar's report to, because there's a statement in there and then COVID happened. So we, I mean, there is some cleanup. Um, I, I agree that most of the numbers and the charts, but I think it is just the narrative in the conclusion, um, because, you know, what's there, I don't think really, you know, summarizes for the town meeting members, kind of like, it needs to acknowledge COVID and, and the impact. Um, so I think that that's what needs to be done. So hopefully it's not a lot more work. Okay, so I will send email to John and hopefully he can, um, can work on this, so. Okay, um. Is there any more comments on the, the Finance Committee's report?
Yeah, um, no, 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 actually. It is what it is.
All right, let's move on to review the meeting schedule. So the pre-town meeting is to be determined and then the, um, town meeting is, is that, is it at eight-thirty? Because one agenda had it at eight-fifteen AM someplace.
Well, it's, it's definitely eight-thirty.
Okay, great. And then, so, okay, so then that takes us to correspondence. We had email from Chris Maner, the town moderator, regarding notice of the continuance of the annual town meeting. Email from Representative Kane regarding state spending bill update. Email from Fire Chief Foner regarding New Engine One. Email from Chris Maner, town moderator, regarding notice of continuance of the annual town meeting for August eighth. And an email from Representative Kane regarding Governor Baker's one-twelfth budget for August. Is there any further comments from the committee, discussion?
I move to adjourn.
Okay, thank you. Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting. Um, we'll now take a roll call vote. Mark Adler?
Dear Lord, aye.
Vikram Chawla?
Aye.
Aaron Howard?
Aye.
Hannah Kane?
Aye.
Mark Murray?
Aye.
Jordan Rubin?
Aye.
Carlos Garcia?
Aye.
Judy Vetter, aye. The meeting is now adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night, all.